Never mind.
I wish I could help more.
I wish you could too. I'm disappointed, a Smith girl.
Evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the school board for March 2nd, 2023. We are going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Right, again, good evening. First, we'll begin with our audio disclosure. Anyone in the audience recording this evening's meeting? And other than the town, not seeing any. And that brings us to public comment. Anyone in the audience like to provide any comments to the board? Not seeing any, thank you. Angelina, that quickly brings us to the student representative report.
Okay. All right. Hello. Okay, cool. Okay, so starting with upcoming dates, Friday, March 3rd, Murdoch High School has its progress reports coming out. March 8th through 9th, there will be half-days for parent-teacher conferences. March 10th, there will be no school for professional development. And March 29th, there will be a half-day for professional development.
What was the date for the 15th?
8th through the 9th are half-days. March 10th, no school. March 29th, half-day. Murdoch Senior, Tiana Gressel, will be performing at the Massachusetts Music Educators Association 2023 All-State Festival at Boston Symphony Hall on Saturday, March 4th. Of the 106 sopranos who auditioned, Tiana placed in the top 25% to earn her position at the All-State Festival. Tickets are available for purchase through the Symphony Hall box office or by calling 1-888-261200. Murdoch High School Student Council delegation will be attending the Mass Association of Student Councils annual conference from March 8th until March 10th, where we will be partaking in the polar plunge for Special Olympics on March 8th at Craigsville Beach in Hyannis. Donations can be made to the team at fundraise.specialolympicsma.org. Search for Murdoch High School or contact Ms. Rondo at the high school. The annual Morton E. Converse Tournament of Plays will be held at Murdoch High School on March 24th and 25th. Over the next several weeks, a cast of students from each class will be rehearsing to perform in the competition for best play. Tickets will be available starting next week for any cast member. On Friday, March 31st, Tiana Gressel and I will be attending the Student Government Day at the State House with Ms. Rondo. At Student Government Day, delegates participate in different legislative sessions with students acting as senators, representatives, and the governor. There will be a bottle-and-can drive benefiting the Dominican Republic Service Trip on March 18th at the high school from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. On Friday, March 31st, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., Toy Town Elementary will be presenting Toy Town's Got Talent in the Toy Town Auditorium. This is a talent show for Toy Town Elementary students, grade 3 through 5. Auditions will be held during lunch for students hoping to participate. As spots are limited, auditioning does not guarantee you a spot in the show. Please visit Winchton Public Schools website to register for the event. As for winter sports, they are wrapping up. The boys' co-op hockey team was eliminated in the second round of the tournament last night, 7 to 3 versus Norwell High School, after a double-overtime win, 5 to 4 versus Taconic High School in the first round on Monday.
Alicia?
Hello?
Hey, there. You hear us?
Oh, hi.
Okay, you're kind of breaking up.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Alicia, apologies for that, for everyone watching and for Alicia, for Angelina. We have member Alicia Jordan joining us by phone.
Okay. At the state divisional meet, sophomore Avery Murphy broke the school record and placed 2nd in the 1-mile run. She then placed 4th in the 2-mile run. At this week's All-State Track Meet, she finished 18th in the state of Massachusetts. After qualifying for the 2-mile, the 400-meter, and the 800-meter, Avery is heading to Nationals in New York on Sunday, March 12th, where she will compete in the 800-meter race. On Wednesday, March 15th, at 3:30, middle-school cheerleading will be showcasing their routine from their undefeated competition season in the Murdoch Gymnasium. Raffles and a bake sale will be held to raise money for team apparel. And finally, for spring sports registration, it is now open on www.familyid.com. If you plan on playing, please sign up as soon as possible and be sure to have a valid physical on file with the nurse within the last 13 months. Practices begin on Monday, March 20th, and times are currently to be announced. But that information will be sent out once it's determined. And that concludes the report. Any questions?
Fantastic, thank you, Angelina. Any questions for Angelina?
Len here.
Great report, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just one comment, Mr. Chair. Got a lot of kids doing some great stuff, huh? All-state festival, music festival, and the track meet going to Nationals.
Nationals, Avery, that's not her first time qualifying either.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so it's exciting.
Well, she 18th in the state, is that what you said? Okay.
She broke a school record, too. In the 1-mile.
Nice. And Tournament of Plays, and Student Council Conference in Hyannis. Wow, lots of good stuff going on. So, thank you for helping us stay informed. Great.
That brings us to our consent agenda. Tonight, it only includes the minutes. The minutes from the January 19th meeting are in your packet. Happy to take a motion if there is one.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to approve the minutes of the January 19th school committee meeting as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, Greg?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Alicia? Alicia?
Yes, hi.
Okay.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to our superintendent's report. And tonight, we have a number of updates from the district, including the update from our business manager, Amanda.
All right, so we have two updates for you today. We'll start with the monthly budget report. In your packets, you should have...
Or we just put it in the middle? You lost her?
We did. We have a form, she doesn't need that. Please.
Okay. So you'll have your monthly budget report as well as your MUNIS report through March 1st. There's not a whole lot of changes since the last budget report, just two weeks ago. We had one payroll and one expense warrant. But I did, in the budget report that I prepared for you, I did make the expense transfers and salary transfers that we showed last week, just so that you can really see the available budget as forecasted through the end of the year. Nothing really to highlight, just a report of where we're at at this time.
Amanda, the updates that you made are to the version, the new version?
That's correct. So I left them highlighted so that you can see, you know, which ones we adjusted. And then at the top, you'll see there's the different columns, and there's a transfer adjustment column. So in those columns, I either transferred money into or transferred money out of based on that spreadsheet from last week, our last school committee meeting. I did leave them highlighted, as I said, just so that you would know, you know, if you wanted to take the time to look at it. But you should see, you know, significantly less negative balances, everything sort of zeroing out because, again, this budget is forecasting through the end of the year, so it's an accurate reflection of our obligations at point in time.
So...
And these, Larry, go ahead.
Just, again, because I'm old.
It's okay. I'm not old.
I'm going to play that card every time.
You and me both, Larry.
Yep. Once you hit the big 7-0, so, anyway. The question is, that I have, is that, again, do we have the color legend?
It should be on the first page in the top right, hopefully. The, the orange ones are, the salaries have been forecasted through the end of the year. So those are, those are encumbered. That is something that's different from your MUNIS report because specifically, it's just a very complicated process to do purchase orders and then export through Harper's. So you're seeing no encumbrances for your salary line items on your MUNIS report. The pinks are time sheets, things like subs, that we're just going to watch carefully. And we may end up using all of the money that's in the pink, or it may transfer over to available budget. So we really keep an eye on that, so that we make sure that, that we're not, you know, overspending, but that we're spending what we need. And then the green and the blue are copies of your expense line items that, based on the budget from, again, when you budgeted, you were budgeting last year for, for right now. So things, things change, you know. I think I gave you an example of the nurse membership. You know, we thought it would be $500, it was really $510, you know. So that line item is technically $10 in the negative, but we're taking it from another place. And so at this point, we forecasted out through the end of the year, and so we're able to make sure that we're utilizing the rest of our available budget.
So with, with that, then, I'm looking at social studies, salary. The encumbrance was $92,000, and you transferred $18,000? That, am I reading that right?
No, we, we transferred out, so if you go to the, let me, it's the column. So you have the account description, and then the next column is the original budget. The next column is your adjustments and transfers. So we actually transferred out of that $12,250 to another account. There is still an available budget there. But again, we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep watching in case our sub lights go high or we have an additional expense that we need. Does that make sense? No?
Have all of these adjustments been made with town hall as well?
They have been sent to town hall, but they're not reflected in the MUNIS report yet.
Okay, oh, that's what you said, okay.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
I was, I was going to wait until the 16th, but we, we thought it would make more sense to do it now since we will spend more time on the 16th on the FY24 budget, so, yeah.
Can I ask a question, too?
Yes.
I'm going to use Excuse Larry people, even though I'm a couple of years younger.
Yeah.
Again, I guess, accounting is not my thing. For example, the MHS Assistant Principal Salary. The actual, year-to-date actual budget, $55,000. Encumbrance is $36,000.
Correct.
How do we get 100% used?
So we're encumbering the rest of that person's salary. So at this point, I'm just going to make up a number. We have 26 payrolls for the year, and we've paid 15 of them, say. So we have nine left, but we know that we've employed that person and that we are going to pay the nine, the nine more salaries. So we've encumbered that 30, you know, $36,000, whatever it might be. So they will, they will receive the, the rest of their salary. So basically, the MUNIS report is showing that we have millions of dollars in available budget, but we really don't have millions of dollars in available budget because a lot of that is tied up in salaries that we know we're going to spend before the end of the year. So the encumbrance is obligated, but it has not been paid out yet.
Okay.
So I think a way to look at it is, when you see those numbers in the encumbrance, it's considered spent.
Well, that's what I thought.
So the combination between the year-to-date and the encumbrance really equals 100% of that salary. So that's why you see 100% spent. We can't spend that money that's encumbered on anything other than that particularly sal, that particular salary line. So that's why it would show 100%, knowing how much we have to spend for, between now and the rest of the year.
Okay, but I guess...
But the encumbrance we have not actually spent yet.
Okay, I got you, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions on the budget?
Thank you very much. I'll probably have the same question in two weeks.
That's okay.
We'll call ya.
All right, that brings us to the superintendent, the rest of the superintendent's report, including, it looks like, the district reorganization update.
Before we get to that, we have an FY24 budget overview, just a very high level as a part of the budget presentation. So again, it's going to be a very high-level overview, knowing that some of the cherry sheets have come out in the past week. So we just kind of, and you have that in your packet, and I'm going to bring that up on the screen as well.
So this, this first page is what you're, what you're used to seeing as far as revenue versus expenses for the budget summary. There's a lot of things that are going to change pretty drastically over the next couple of weeks as we get finalized budgets from the state, finalized numbers from town hall for indirect costs. But everything is, is, is based on, you know, estimates based on what we are receiving from the town and based on our, our FY24 budget. So in, behind this, you'll actually see the FY24 budget summary. And I think I've been talking a little bit about this for the last few months in reorganizing the budget according to the chart of accounts. And the reason that, that I recommend doing that is so that your, your budget can tell a story and you can analyze it by data. Jesse does a really, really good job of organizing their chart of accounts. And so what we've done is really organize the budget by the chart of accounts. And things that it can highlight, for example, is, you know, you might say, wow, we're having, we're having, you know, a lot of need in this one particular area. You can actually look at the budget and see, well, we're not, we're not funding that area. So that would make sense as to why we're having a high need in that area. And so you can really make some, some wise budget decisions when you can look at a budget as data. And the reason that I, I think it's very important that you do that now is, again, because Winchton is, is going to see the opportunity from the Student Opportunity Act. I don't know if, if you know much about the Student Opportunity Act, I can just do a very quick overview. But, but basically, the many business managers, and Worcester was, was a, was a huge driver in this here in Central Mass, but they started saying, it's great that the state gives us Chapter 70 money to offset our foundation budgets, but our foundation budgets are not meeting our student needs, particularly in communities where we rely so heavily on Chapter 70. And so they, they spent a lot of time looking at the formula. And how they come up with your foundation budget is basically looking at your enrollment, and they say, this is, this is how much we believe it would cost to educate an elementary student. In the, there's 13 categories across 11 enrollment. 13 enrollment categories, 11 operation categories. So they say, an elementary student, we would spend $200 on administration, $300 on education supplies, $700 on instruction and whatnot. And then they build your foundation budget from that. And what, what these advocates said was, that's all well and good, but every student requires a different level of funding. And so they started accounting for the fact that communities had low-income students. They started counting for the fact that, that communities had high-needs students, special education students. And so they've adjusted the formula. And because it is such a huge difference between what we were getting funded and what we should be getting funded, they decided to spread it out over a multitude of years. And so the hope is that in fiscal year 2027, our foundation budget will be fully funded at the rates that, you know, we believe we should be funded at. And so that is why you're seeing such a huge increase in your foundation budget, and then therefore, your Chapter 70 money, last year, this year, and then for the next three years. And so it's important to look at, you know, those, they call them research, research-based operational practices. And ideally, they want you to spend the money in the areas that were underfunded before, particularly special education, intervention, early literacy, all of these, these areas. And you've done a really nice job over the last year trying to meet the needs of your budget in those, those areas. And that's what we're doing with the FY24 budget. There's a particular, I would say, particular need in special education to, to fund that department. So we have allocated some, some funding there, and you'll see it. So when you're looking through the budget, each, each section is categorized by location. And so you'll see a overall summary for district-wide expenses. And that's not necessarily, you know, central office, that's our special education expenses, our curriculum expenses, technology expenses, things like that. You'll see a budget for Toy Town, which will be the Early Learning Center, Memorial School, which will be grades 1 to 4, Murdoch Middle School, which will be grades 5 to 8, and Murdoch High School, which will be 9 to 10. And so all the backup is sort of here. So we're just going to kind of go through the overview today. But, but while you're looking at it over the next couple of weeks, you know, before the 16th, you can kind of see the breakdown of administration costs, instructional costs, and whatnot.
So just to be clear, there's no vote tonight. We're just trying to give you a very high-level overview so that you can be prepared two weeks from now when we give an actual full-budget presentation. But the numbers have come in, we've been waiting on, and so that's the spirit of what we're doing tonight, is just to give you a heads-up and give you plenty of time to sort of review some of the numbers that we currently have, although we're currently, we're also waiting on numbers from the town side. So we don't have indirect costs and those types of things at this time. But, you know, we do know personnel costs, you know, we have all those types of things, and we know what they'll be. So just to, just to be clear, this is for very high-level, no vote needed as we proceed tonight.
Yep.
Just a quick question. On the, I'm assuming that the approximately $4.5 million dropping grant revenues, that's because the S or funds?
That's correct.
Are, those are ending?
That's correct. That's correct. So if you look at the, the spreadsheet here, basically, they have come up with our foundation budget, based on our enrollment, to be $20,130,691 for FY24. That's, that shows us a large increase in Chapter 70 to a little over $14 million, and a local aid required contribution of $6.1 million. For indirect costs, we've done a placeholder, and basically, we've just sort of gone through all your indirect costs based on a, you know, reasonable percentage increase and come up with this number. It's, again, it's just a placeholder, we have not gotten the actual numbers from, from the town yet. Our, our circuit breaker allocation is based on what we received this year for circuit breaker. Same thing with school choice. We have made it a priority for this budget to ensure that the Robinson-Broadhurst and Murdoch Trust are used for student enrichment. So we have taken things that have been traditionally in those, out of, out of those as an offset and put them into the, the local general budget, things like Chromebooks, our Chromebook leases and whatnot.
Amanda, sorry to interrupt, but are those real numbers for FY24 for the Broadhurst and Murdoch Trust, or are those estimates?
They are, the, the number that we submitted for our application, but we have not received...
We have heard from Murdoch Trust, and that will be a real number. We haven't heard back yet from Robinson-Broadhurst.
That's not till May, isn't it?
For Robinson-Broadhurst, correct. But we've heard, heard from Murdoch Trust that that will be the number that's coming forward.
So then you have your total revenues, and then the grant estimates are based on our grant receipts from this year.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I just wanted to, Murdoch Trust, Ed Supplies. It says, Ed Supplies on Murdoch Trust?
I think that's just a holdover from past...
It is.
Past, there will be no Ed Supplies in Murdoch Trust.
There's no, it will all be student enrichment.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I know we've talked about that, I just want to make sure that that's out, so people don't think that we're still spending it on supplies.
Yep. I, I did not correct that.
I think you updated us, Mr. Superintendent, a while ago on the circuit breaker, but I'm not so sure I expected that dramatic of an increase.
Yeah.
So, could we, just to cut, yeah. So there's obviously a dramatic increase in the circuit breaker. So that's one question, if you have an explanation behind that. And the other is the decrease in the school choice allocation for FY24. I believe that's based on previous school choice, so it's always in arrears, is that correct?
It's, that is correct. So that is based on our cherry sheet estimate for what we will receive this year for school choice. We were actually looking at school choice and noticing that both our sending and receiving school choice numbers were down significantly this year, a little bit, a little bit this current year significantly for next year. I'm not really sure why that, why that is. So both are sending and receiving.
The good news from that would be that we're not sending as many students out of district based on that number, but we're also not receiving as many as we have in the past. But not enough time to dig into that quite as of yet, but there is somewhat of a silver lining in there that we're not having as many students leave the district on school choice, based on, just based on that number.
Indeed, you know, the great news, that there are fewer students choicing out, and that's evident from the numbers. Back to the... Circuit breaker?
Circuit breaker. So I think there's, there's probably a few different reasons. Your, your out-of-district tuition went up significantly, the reimbursement rate went up slightly, depending on, you know, how you're compiling your, your claim. So there's a few different things. I, I've been talking with the Special Education Director about it as well. It's a, it's, it's sort of like a double-edged sword, you know. We are able to utilize collaboratives, which is a wonderful, wonderful thing, it keeps tuitions lower. But it also means that our, our, our claim for circuit breaker is also lower. So some of your reimbursement rates, based on whether or not they're going to collaboratives and, or versus private schools, that threshold between, you know, they, they, basically, you can claim anything over whatever the standard rate is for the year. Last year, I believe it was around $42,000. So if you spend more than $42,000 to educate a student, anything above and beyond that amount goes towards your circuit breaker claim, and you receive a portion of that back for reimbursement. So those numbers have gone up.
And so to give an example, to go to our co-ops, that we, we belong to two co-ops, that might be, depending on just round numbers, a student might, we might expend $60,000 on a student's tuition for the year at one of our co-ops, as opposed to a private school, meaning we're not one of our co-ops. Where, let's say that the, our co-op seats are full, they don't have any seats, or maybe we can't service that student at that co-op. Those tuitions can be over $100,000. So you can see where, you know, if the threshold is $42,000, we get a bigger reimbursement coming from, from those places, but we've also spent a lot more money. So as, as we've been through COVID, you know, there have been additional services needed, and, you know, if it's families moving in or whatever it happens to be. So as we're sending students out, which we do every year for out-of-district placements, you know, a number of those seats might be filled at our co-ops, and we have to look elsewhere. So I think that that's what we're seeing as a reflection of some of that here.
There's a lot of services that were not being provided to the full potential that they were previously. I think it was 2006, there was the Rosie D Act, so we had a lot of in-home services for mental health needs, for early intervention, all of these things that families really became reliant on, that were done over Zoom, it may not have been as beneficial. And so a lot of those sort of wraparound services, there's only so much that the school can, can do, and so sometimes we do have to contract out as well for some of those services. So some of that stuff can get added into your circuit breaker claiming, like speech, speech and language services, OTPT, all of those kinds of things.
Can we just, can we come back? Can we just, can we come back to the ESAR number real quick? I just wanted to clarify the, the question there. So it's not that we're, I, I think, I'm sorry, I don't remember if it was Mr. Vine or Mr. Murphy that asked about the ESAR grant revenues going, or the grant revenues going from a little over five million last year to a million this year and saying that, you know, ESAR is finished. It's not exactly finished, but just to be clear, that the, the grant revenue you see here is new revenue this year. So, you know, ESAR is not new and it's accounted for, so we don't see it in this budget line. It's not, I just want to be really clear, it's not to say that it's spent and we don't have it anymore. We do have it, but it's not new revenue for FY24. So I just wanted to be clear that that still sits on the table and, and the initiatives that we've been running are still running through that, that ESAR number and we don't have anything to be concerned about by saying, oh, wait a minute, there's only a million bucks left. That's, that's money for this year that you would see as more in line with what we've had in the past, where we're looking at some of our, our typical grants, our title grants and our special education grants.
So where would, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Where would we, where will we find ESAR monies? On here? Where are ESAR monies?
One of the things that we talked about doing on the 16th was sort of giving an overview of, of our, our account balances for all of our revolving accounts, including, including ESAR. So we can kind of go through that, that on the 16th. Again, when you wrote your ESAR grants, we obligated those funds in the sense of, you know, there were some projects that you wanted to complete, there's some tutoring stipends, things like that. So those are going to continue based on how you laid them out over the, the few years, but we will not see any additional revenue.
Okay, so that's why they're not on here?
That's correct.
Getting any more money?
Correct, correct. So we'll still be spending it, making sure that we utilize all the funds that we received, but we're not going to be receiving any more and we can't start any new initiatives because we've already obligated those funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. That's okay. So then if you go to expenses, our projected salaries for FY24 are 12.9 million, our projected expenses, 4 million. We are expecting to spend a little over 760,000 in revolving accounts primarily, again, that comes from the circuit breaker. Utilizing gift and trust expenses for student enrichment and then our other salaries such as school choice. Grant salaries at about 470,000 and additional grant expenses and programs, 640, 664,000. So you will see that at this, at this point in time, we currently have a surplus of 13,000. Again, we expect those numbers to change. There are some, for example, today we received the tuition increase for one of the collaboratives, which is not reflected in this, so, you know, we'll be tweaking, tweaking it as we go, but we are in good shape at this point based on what we know, what we have for obligations for next year.
Great. Any other questions on budget, budget update, or the beginning of the overview of the FY24?
Not this time. I'm sure in a couple of weeks.
Looking forward to next week. Or two weeks.
Not next week. All right. So I think the next item then this evening is just a quick district reorganization update. So even though we've been away for a couple of weeks, we did have February break in those last couple of weeks and we did not meet for the district reorganization. So we did meet this Monday in a number of those, a number of those committees. And I would say that the primary piece that they, that we worked on this, this past week was really thinking about building, excuse me, building tours and sort of room placements. How would those, how would those buildings sort of be organized, if you will? So if you think about, excuse me, the Toy Town physical building and the Memorial physical building, you know, they're going to look a little bit differently. You've got a lot of folks moving around so that have not been in those buildings. So, you know, those meetings go for only about an hour and an hour and a half. And this particular week was a tour of the buildings, what would be the best fit for the different grade levels, you know, where should kindergarten be versus the pre-K and so on? So that comprised the most, the biggest component of, of the committees this week. And of course, we still have the timeline that will be going out, we'll be ordering the boxes and, and those types of things to get out as we discussed at the last meeting to start packing and hitting those timeline dates. Where our first real big timeline date is to make sure that we have the packing supplies and whatnot as we, the week prior to April break. So, you know, that, that was what we sort of talked about in those meetings and committed to, to having those things in place as we, as we move to February break. So that's really the update tonight for the district reorganization.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Moving on to data presentations, we can start with the memorial presentation. I'm going to leave the middle school presentation and the ELA presentation together because we have the same presenter. So if Ms. Jilson would like to come up for the memorial presentation, and would you like me to present that? I have it on my computer here too, if you'd like, that'd make it easier. I did a minute ago. Floor is yours.
Awesome. So I'm going to share our middle of the year data with, with you all. The beginning of the year, I shared the beginning of the year data, obviously. And it starts with, I don't have the button, so hit the next slide.
Oh, sorry. Got it?
It starts with, this is, I'm a visual person and sometimes just better to see a picture. This is our DIBELS data. And so DIBELS is the primary assessment that we use at Memorial to figure out where our kids are at for like supporting reading interventions. And then we also use STAR, which I'll get into a little bit. This gives us a visual picture and I'm sharing the composite score, which is all the subtests together. And ultimately it kind of gives us a stoplight picture of red, yellow, green, blue. And you'll see kindergarten, beginning of the year, kindergarten, middle of the year. That's that top one. Middle one is first grade, red, yellow, green, blue. And then you've got your middle of the year scores. And I, I'm going to go into details on the other slides, but I've just, so you can kind of get a picture. And ultimately what we want to do is get rid of red and get more green and blue. And as you can see, as the year is trending, it is actually going in the right direction for a quick view, which is really exciting. On this particular test, DIBELS, which is a dynamic indicator of basic early literacy skills, if you want a mouthful and you want to say that three times fast, go ahead. It measures several different things. It measures letter naming, phonemic awareness, sound, letter sounds, decoding, word reading, reading accuracy and reading fluency. And it combines all those different things and gives us a composite score and that's what you're seeing for our entire grade level at K1 and 2. So we're going to move along and that's the next one. Then what I'm showing you right now, because I think this is really part of the story for kindergarten, every year you hear, oh, these kids this year, they're so much harder, so much, you know, so much more. This is actually the composite scores for the last three years of kindergarten. So you see 2021 is the first three boxes and that's beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year. You can see how the red trends down, yellow, blue, green, so that, you know. Then you see the middle scores, the beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year, same kind of thing. And then you see the last two is this year. And if you look at, and I told, I shared at the beginning of the year when I came and talked to you about our kindergarten, that our kindergarteners came in this year really in a much different place and this graph is kind of showing you exactly that. You know, we came in with 87% of our kids either below benchmark or well below benchmark. And yellow is below benchmark and red is well below benchmark. And I put that gray line there because that gray line is really showing where our red kids are in kindergarten right now. And you can see that the other two years, our, our kids had started in a very different place. So the amount of work that our kindergarten teachers and our kindergarten kids are doing this year is substantially more, even though our numbers really, I mean, in 2021, 2021, they were, the numbers were a little bit lower, but last year our numbers were virtually the same. So you can just kind of see what we're working with and how hard we're working. You can see just the difference that happened from fall to now and then how the numbers have changed, which is great. I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty exciting. So I just wanted to give you that three-year perspective because it kind of helps tell the story. If you want to just turn. So this is this year's story and I am super excited for our teachers and our kids because it's been a lot of work. Like I said, 87% of our kids in kindergarten came in below or well below benchmark. And if you can see the number of kids that we've moved out of well below benchmark, you know, that's 18% of the kids. We've moved 19 kids out. I used the yellow for well below in that because that's kind of a neutral score because out of those, I mean, it, you know, it didn't, you know, it's, we gained four in the well below, but we really didn't because we moved 19 out of well below. So it's kind of like a neutral. I didn't want to say it was negative because it really isn't. But you can see that 13 kids and 13% of those kids moved into benchmark and then we did have a little bit of a gain in the well, the above benchmark. So I just think that, you know, the kindergarten teachers and the kindergarten kids, the kindergarten parents really just need a super big pat on the back because they're working super hard. It's, it's, it's a tough, it's, it's, you know, it's a lot of work. You know, they, the pandemic has definitely impacted all grades and I don't think we really considered how it impacted the kids that weren't even in school yet. But we can see that it definitely had, had, had some issues. The next couple of slides really don't, this, this just tells, I wanted to, I wanted to share it so I can tell you what we're predicting or what we're hoping to predict. So this is what's happened in 2021 with our 87 kids and how the years changed. And I really just kind of wanted to show the end of the year, that at the end of the year, middle to end of the year, we moved, we moved some kids percentages-wise in the well below and the below, and then we moved some more in the positive direction at, at benchmark and above. And if you can just go to the next slide, these are just quicks because I didn't, I just wanted to give numbers. If you want to move to the next slide, that'd be great. I think that was, wait a minute. Can you go back one?
We got it.
All right. Yeah, that's the one. All right. And then the same with this one. So this was last year and again, looking at the differences at the end of the year. So we had some really good growth in the middle of the year, but the power of learning for kindergarten, there's some kind, something that happens, there's some kind of magic that happens around February, if you talk to first grade teachers or kindergarten teachers, suddenly the light goes on and things come together for them. And then it's like, wow, they can start applying the learning that's been happening up until this time. And so now they're starting to apply. And so you see a really big jump and so you can see that those numbers at the end of the year really make a difference. So now we can go to the end. So here it is, the end of the year scores. So I kind of did some predicting and I added our end of the years and I, and I'm estimating. I'm like, this is, this is where I'll gamble. I'm not a big gambler, but this is where I'm going to take a gamble. And I truly believe that we're going to see these kind of growths. We're going to move 18% of those kids, 18% more of those kids out of, out of the well below and five more percent. This is what I'm predicting and I really think that we're going to see some really good growth in the end, just based on how much they've already moved. And I'm going to give the numbers about how many kids we're actually now supporting in small group. At the beginning of the year, we didn't really do a lot of small group instruction for kindergarten because we had so many kids that needed just tier one instruction. So we really were just like 87 out of 107. We just need to do some really good tier one with small group and whatnot. Now, we actually have now redefined it even more and now we're getting a lot more kids. So that's how kindergarten's looking. So kindergarten's going in the right direction with a lot of hard work. And now we're going to move on to first grade. And again, first grade is also making some great gains. Here we are again, using DIBELS. And then I'm going to talk a little bit about our other assessment that we use, which is called STAR. And there's two different forms of STAR that we use based on our learners. So here we are with DIBELS again, and in first grade, you see at the beginning of the year, 65% of our first graders at the, at the start were well below or below. I think some of it attributes to not a lot happens for these kids over the summer. I'm not sure how many kids are invested in reading, so I think we see that summer slide. If you look at the end of the year where they left in June and then they come, so we do get a little bit of a summer slide. But from fall to now, you can see that we did some great moving of kids. We've got green all the way across the bottom there where we've moved 14, we've moved 26% of our kids out of well below, we've moved 1% out of below, we've moved 14% into benchmark and then we've moved 11% into above benchmark. So you can see that we've had a 15% difference overall between well below and below and at and above. And you can just kind of see the colors in the pictures if you just want to get a quick snapshot. So first grade is also working really hard. We basically are at a 50/50 split and we're hoping to trend obviously forward. Do you need more? You're, the number, so if you're looking at those in this got printed later, I screwed up on my math and I've changed these slides because I didn't, my math was wrong. I swear to God, I copied and pasted wrong and caught it three times at least. So...
This is the...
This is the right one. What's on the paper isn't and I apologize. I don't know. I, I, you can look at the, I don't know, you can look at it a thousand times and you're like, oh, wait a minute, that's wrong. Oh, wait a minute, that's wrong. That's why you don't do things at the last minute and you give yourself a lot of time. So if you have paper versions, I'm sorry. It is what it is. So the next slide talks, and this is where it gets very interesting because you can see with DIBELS, we kind of have a 50/50 split. DIBELS is an assessment that we give one-on-one and it really is measuring some very different skills that this STAR early literacy is, is, is measuring. And you can see that according to STAR early literacy, which is a computer-based assessment that our first graders are taking, it is a reading assessment. It's only, it's 24 questions. Let's see. They, they, in order to, so grades two and up take STAR reading. Or if you score 853 on early literacy, you can take STAR reading. All right? So there's the distinction. And STAR reading is aligned to MCAS scores. Early literacy is really a, an assessment that measures early literacy and early numeracy skills. It's typically given, given to non-readers or early emergent readers. So it's not as, it doesn't do a, a lot of what a, a reader does. So it, even its distinctions and how it levels kids is different. In STAR, you're going to see that it doesn't say at or above benchmark on watch intervention or urgent intervention, but on early literacy it does. They actually change the wording. So it gets really, like, you have to like, oh, wait a minute, I'm looking at early literacy, so I need to look, I need to say it this way if I'm looking at STAR reading. I need to say, oh, meeting expectations or not meeting expectations or partially meeting expectations. So you have to kind of like shift your mindset. It gets confusing, so I just wanted to point it out because I'm, you know. But when you look at this, it says, oh, 73% of our, or 71% of our kids are at or above benchmark. So it's...
Shante?
Yeah.
Quick question.
Sure.
Again, I'm going to use my senior citizen card.
Okay.
So the figures, I'm trying to understand, you've got your DIBELS.
Yep.
Where about 70% or so-ish, maybe 50% at the end, 50% of the kids were below.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And now I look at this one, 71% are above. So what's the connection?
At or above.
At or above.
Right, yep.
But, so that doesn't, how does, what, do they measure different things?
Yes.
Is that why?
Yes. That's, that's what I was just trying to explain, is that it's, it's a different kind of assessment. It's, DIBELS measures some very specific skills in a fluency kind of manner with a one-on-one thing. This is doing it on a computer where kids are answering multiple choice questions on a screen. And so this might say, find the picture that begins with, you know, B. And so they're given four pictures and they have to click one of the four. So one of the answers is right, so that, that, so it is measuring. What's beautiful about this is it adjusts to the child's level. So if it, if they keep getting the answer correct, it will keep pushing it up so that their score, so it's adaptive is what it really, what it's called, so that it will grow. And you can see that's what happens, that graph above it shows the adaptiveness of it.
Okay. So I'm going to just ask because I'm not an expert. But my understanding is that one of the things across the country that has, that is changing or has changed is that in reading, when they used to do whole language, they would show pictures and the kids did much better on the pictures. But if you just showed them the word... them the word, they had a lot of trouble because they didn't know phonetics. So they, it'd be the same word, but they couldn't get the word. But if you showed them a picture, they could get it. And that's what this sounds like.
No.
It sounds similar.
No, no, this, I, I probably gave you a bad example as far as a question goes. So DIBELS is really doing what you're talking about, is measuring our kids' ability to do
Phonetics?
The foundational phonics work. It's measuring the letter naming, the letter sounds, the phonemic awareness, the ability to segment, the ability to blend, the ability to read whole words, and the ability to read fluency, whether it be word level or passage level. So DIBELS is giving that. It's done one-on-one. So you've got a teacher and a student working one-on-one. They've got like a drill that they have, like it's what they call one-minute drills. So we, you know, it's, it's been used for years and it's a pretty solid assessment that gives us a lot of information to support the development of early literacy skills. That's why it's called DIBELS. Right? So that's really good. What STAR early literacy does is it is measuring some of those things, but it's also measuring some of the state standards such as comprehension and other things. So, and it's got numeracy. It's the foundational stuff. That's not necessarily oral reading fluency that DIBELS is measuring at this level. At the, at the STAR level, it does do that because the kids are readers. You're doing early literacy with STAR with non-readers or early emergent readers. That's why they say if they can get to, if they, if they get a standard score of eight fifty-three, they're ready to use STAR as an assessment to measure their reading ability. But if they're, if they're not going to get that, then they're better off. You're going to get a better score. And you can look at this, like, what's beautiful about this is it will say where they are in all the standards. You can get a nice printout of their instructional standards and their instructional skill base. So it's, it's a nice assessment, but it's measuring something very different than DIBELS does. But it, they, they, they come together very nicely to give a nice picture. It's, so one assessment doesn't do it for kids. So this is just, helps to us try and triangulate. Well, it doesn't actually triangulate. It gives us two corners. And then with the teacher input and being able to see the kids working in the classroom kind of gives us that triangle of how the kid really is. We've got three good data points to say, yes, this is solid information. Or wait a minute, this doesn't match this. So that's the difference. But yeah, I'm glad that you, I'm glad that you recognized because that's literally the question that I was, we were talking about. It's like, well, DIBELS is telling us that we only have fifty percent of our kids that are at or above, but STAR early literacy is saying we have seventy-one percent. So it's, but then we have to look at what it's measuring and, you know, what we know.
And who's taking it, right?
Right. Well, I mean, the, the, this is the first grade. They're all taking it. All, all a hundred and seven, a hundred and eight kids that are in first grade. So, yeah.
Greg?
So how do you merge the results of both of these assessments and come up with a strategy for?
Well, what we do, we lean at, at, at the K and one level and two to a certain extent, we really use DIBELS because we need to make sure that they can blend, they can segment, that they do know their letter sounds. Because without those foundational skills, we can't get them to be readers. And so DIBELS for us is really, really important. And STAR doesn't necessarily give us that detailed level. It gives us good information, no question about it. We didn't actually start STAR early literacy with first grade until December because we're like, no, we need to get DIBELS. DIBELS is one-on-one. It's a heavy lift. We have to have an assessment team do it. It takes a lot of time. And so when we did STAR in the fall, we didn't do the early literacy. We just did the math for first grade. But then we were like, okay, let's give it a shot. Let's do it. The teachers got good information. We do like it. We like what we see. It's giving us different information, but it's still informative. But it does have that little piece to it that's, you know, like, okay, what are we going to do with that? How are we going to use it? And the one thing about early literacy where STAR can align to MCAS and kind of do the predictive to MCAS and, and whatnot, early literacy doesn't do that yet. So that's kind of like the, and that could be why they don't have the same alignment for letters and, you know, the wording. That's what I'm going to assume. That's what I'm going to assume. So, so that's kind of it. And so I just kind of wanted to point out, when our first graders took this in December for the first time, we did have twenty-three kid, friends, little ones that were able to actually hit the, that eight fifty-three mark that said, oh, they could take STAR reading. When we did it at benchmark time in, in January, we didn't have them migrate to that yet because we're like, you know what, it's new. There's, we still get a really good score. We still get, you know, because it does push them because it's an adaptive test. It's going to give them what they need to show what they're able to do. But this time, did I say fif- twenty-three? But at the end of January, actually thirty-eight of them were now got a score at or above that eight fifty-three. So the next time we do early literacy, some of our kids will probably, or some of our first graders, excuse me, will probably be doing STAR reading versus early literacy so that we can support them on their growth in reading. Because again, it's measuring something different. So it kind of differentiates for us and gives us what we need to grow those as readers. So that's where, that's how first grade's standing. And then we have second grade, which is the next one. And you can see the same thing. We're trending in the right way. We're, you know, we're moving kids out of red. Again, we have that kind of stall in the below where it's like, okay, you know, we, you know, we had two kids move into yellow. But again, we moved some out of red. If you, and again, I'm using the stoplight imagery. It just, it just, that's what we use. Just helps us. And then moving up towards benchmark and above benchmark. So right now we have about seventy percent of the kids, according to DIBELS, at or above benchmark. And, you know, when you're reading one-on-one with kids, it seems pretty accurate for scoring with that. I wanted to make sure that I told you everything that I needed to. Okay. And the other thing that I, all right. So then, the next one is talking about STAR. So we've got a little bit of a discrepancy here with STAR as we did with DIBELS. But what also is not measured here is that some of our second graders who need a significant support, who are identified as learning challenged, who have IEPs, aren't ready to take STAR. They can't get to that eight fifty-three score. So they're taking early literacy. So they, so that you can see the number that we don't have all of our second graders able to take STAR because they're not readers yet. So that's why you don't see that whole score. So the numbers seem off.
Is that only the cases for second grade?
Yeah. Because if right now first grade's all taking early literacy.
Okay.
We don't have, we don't have a differentiation. We'll probably have a, we'll have a differentiation probably in the spring with first grade because we will have kids that are more than ready. Oh, can you go back to the first grade one just for a second? Because I showed you that red line on that graph. Everyone to the left of the red line, that's pretty much the kids that hit that eight fifty-three or above. So you can see, we have some first graders that are really strong readers. That those, that standard score was up towards the thousands. We have a few that were really, really strong readers. So just, again, visually, I, it's just easier to say. All right. So you can move back on. So that's kind of the picture for STAR reading. Same thing, they definitely, everyone's moving in, we're moving in the right direction. We didn't go backwards, which is always nice. Nice to know we're not going backwards. So now we're talking about STAR math. And again, we've changed the, changed the wording in STAR. It's now exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations. And this is aligned to the MCAS. And these scores according to the MCAS, I mean, according to STAR and Renaissance, these do align to how they would possibly perform on MCAS. They say that these are projective of MCAS according to Renaissance. And we don't know if they're in first grade. So they haven't taken MCAS yet or second grade. They haven't taken that. But they say they are predictive. So, but this is where we stand. You can see that we started out at thirty-nine percent of our kids are, were at or above benchmark and now we're at fifty-three. And sixty-one percent were below benchmark and now we're at forty-seven. So we've had a fourteen percent difference for first grade. And we can talk about second grade. Same with second grade. We started out with thirty-one percent at or above benchmark and we're now at forty-four percent. So we've had a thirteen percent difference. And same with below, we started at sixty-nine percent and now we're at fifty-six percent. So, and you can see that in the different subcategories, there have been some good changes. So what are we doing with all that data? We, in the fall, just for a point of reference, we had a hundred and nine kids in first and second grade getting additional support services through interventions. Out of those a hundred and nine, we were able to service and forty-five of those kids met their intervention goals and graduated out of intervention, which is super exciting. Now, we have sixty-four, sixty-four students in first and second grade receiving small group intervention to support their learning progress as a result of their assessment scores and teacher recommendations. And I am missing a page. So can you turn this line? Can you go to the next one? Oh, there you go. Perfect. And what we've done with kindergarten, at the beginning of the year, we really weren't doing a lot of kindergarten pullout. We had our kindergarten parents doing some tier-two small group as well as kindergarten teachers doing tier-two, tier-two work, small group and tier-one. Now, we were, because of the difference in first and second grade, we now have about fifty-five kindergarten students that are getting additional targeted small group instruction based on these results. So we literally took all these results, teased it all out, said, these kids need this based on this, these kids need this based on this, these kids need this. And we parsed it all out and we figured out schedules. And so all of these kids are getting additional support services in phonemic awareness and phonics. And the other thing that all the teachers have done, and we did this last January, we did it in September, is we do what we call a four-square analysis where we look at our scores and we figure out what the strengths are, what the challenges are, and what we can do about it. And we set some goals. And so the teachers also were able to look at the growth outcomes using DIBELS, which, so if we look at a child who's in the red, and I'm just using that as the term, in the red, and it doesn't look like, oh, my God, they were in the red before and they're still in the red. Oh, no, it doesn't look like they made any growth. Well, what's beautiful about DIBELS is they actually have a growth chart that we can look at. And it, it sets goals for the kids. And it says, okay, this is what we'd like to see, or this is based on all the mathematical amazingness that these things can do. It says, we want, we, we expect this to happen. And we can look and say, okay, they made above-average growth or well above average growth or average growth, which is what we would want, is to at least make average growth. Or, oh, no, they didn't. They made below-average growth or well, well below average growth. And we were able to take those scores and really look at those, especially for those kids that, again, stayed in a category. And we're like, oh, wait a minute. But when we look, they were making well above average growth. We had some kids that were in the red, but they made well above average growth. They're not going to get out of the red just because of where they started. But if you looked at where they started and looked at the growth they made, they were like, well above average growth, well above average growth, well above average growth. They've just got so far to go, but they're working really hard. So it was just really exciting to be able to see. Because that was always the question is, you know, are they making enough growth? And this, that, that part of the assessment tool really helped us to decide, ugh, yes, they are. Ooh, we need to tweak something. We need to figure out what we can do to better support them. And the teachers did a really nice job of, of analyzing that information and figuring out how to support the kids. So that's what's going on with our data. Any questions?
Questions for the principal?
Greg?
For you or for, for Thad, do we have similar data for, say, two or three years before COVID hit? I mean, just out of curiosity, I mean, I would love to compare the, you know, the progress of the students in those years in those grades to the, to what we're seeing here. To, just to see how much that really did affect or, or didn't affect our students.
Yeah, I think, you know, we've been using DIBELS for a number of years, but I know there's different versions and I can't speak to that specifically. And I don't know if Ms. Jilson can or Mr. Landman. But we do have, we do have historic data around DIBELS. We do not have historic data around STAR slash Renaissance as we adopted that this year. But we would have some data prior to COVID for, for DIBELS that I'm sure we could try to dig up and see what we could find for us.
Yeah. And, and Mr. Chair? And I guess I would also say that what we're seeing here, especially for kindergarten, sort of highlights the need for the initiative that you came to us with in terms of the early literacy initiative that you're setting up at Toy Town. Because it, it's scary to me, anyway, that the kids are coming in that unprepared, even for kindergarten.
Yeah. Thank you for pointing that out. And that wasn't, that wasn't an insignificant piece of data in, in sort of thinking about this. But we, we knew our kindergartners had been behind and they have been for, you know, a few years to no fault of their own or no fault of the teachers. I want to be really clear about that. You know, we work with what comes to us. And we realize that that's, you know, as a result of COVID specifically right now, that that's, you know, gotten, gotten further and further behind and we just need to address it. And so I know the teachers at, at Memorial are working very hard in, in their current iteration, but we wanted to put a tighter focus on that. And so thank you for pointing that out.
That, Mr. Chair, that would have been my follow-up question to Greg is, you know, what kind of programming and what kind of assessments are you going to do in your, in your new configuration for the early literature program for pre-K and one?
Yeah. I mean, I think that's still coming in terms of the steering committee and whatnot. But I, you know, it certainly envisioned it specifically at kindergarten. We would continue with the, these types of assessments. And we have, as of a couple of years ago, sort of installed some, some phonics. You'll recall, we've, you've heard a lot about phonics in this room over the past, I don't know, two, two to, two and a half years. And so I think, you know, we're starting to see some of the fruits of those labors as we move into grades one and two and sort of, in terms of that progress. But, you know, looking now to extend as well into the pre-K arena and aligning those things with kindergarten and making sure that we're aligned all the way up is a big component of that early literacy center as well.
Okay.
Shante, this is good information. We can see growth, which of course is exactly what you want to see in the middle of the year.
Yeah.
Plenty of room to, to work on.
Oh, absolutely.
But growth is, is always a good thing. I think the only question I would have is whether or not we have anything that is normed against national data, regional data. So we can see our own growth, but how do those growth amounts compare?
These are both, these are both normed too. So like, this is, but DIBELS is a normed test and so is in STAR. I don't know that I pulled that information in. I, I, when it gives percentages, I'm assuming, and I'm making, I'm making an assumption right now that it's, it's against what the normed benchmarks are. We didn't make those benchmarks. They're not district benchmarks.
I think when Dr. Landman comes up in a little bit for the ELA piece, he can address some of that norming, maybe.
Yeah. I, 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 we don't, we don't set those benchmarks. We just let the computer sent them, set them. Well, not the computer, but the, the, the assessment. Like, for example, the early literacy one, STAR sets it at forty percent, the fortieth percentile and above for at or above. Right? So we don't do that. And we use the state on STAR reading or STAR math. We use that state one. We don't set, like, it allows you to set district benchmarks or school benchmarks, but we made a district decision to use the state benchmarks that were already predetermined. The thing is, is the early literacy doesn't have state benchmarks. So we just use the ones that are in the program, which is at the fortieth percentile. So, yeah.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
And I think, Dr. Landman, I'm sure will talk a little bit more about some of that norming. But one of the things we've found historically, specifically about Renaissance and norms in general, is that, you know, you hear a lot about how successful Massachusetts is in general and that the Massachusetts norms are often higher than the national norms when it comes to norming. So when you start comparing to national as opposed to state, there's some, some significant difference. So it's, it's important that we're comparing at a state level as opposed to the national level when we can. So with that, I'd like to invite Dr. Landman up. Dr. Landman is going to give presentations this evening for both the middle school data. Ms. Vazina is unable to attend tonight for personal reasons. And so we've asked Dr. Landman to step in and present the data for the middle school because we had promised that we would be presenting that data and didn't want to extend this any further. And then he will also be making a presentation on the ELA curriculum adoption process this evening as well. So I'm going to pass the cord over to him so he can plug in and give him the floor.
It's showing up on my, my screen, but so far not showing up up there. If you, let me escape and try again. If you, let me escape and try again. Not sure. Any idea why they're not being? Yeah, it is. I don't, but I have a dongle, we can try it outside. I used that port earlier today. Let's try one of these, just in case. There's something going on with my board, I hope not, but. Hmm. Well, that's odd, too. That's my...
So, we can get lift-off.
You know, when we look at displays, hold on, maybe seeing this... Yeah, let's hold on a second.
Latest news, our high school will be starting a technology, an AV program.
There we go. Hold on. This is behaving very oddly, but we figured it out. Okay, hold on a second. Yeah, we're going to get the ring up here. Hold on.
I'm not sure why he's sitting silently on the side.
All right, I think we're good now.
You got it?
Yeah, hold on.
Thanks, Andrew. Appreciate it, Andrew, all your hard work.
Oh, no, that was a mistake. Hold on a second. The review, which I did, that would be the right idea.
Lights go off at midnight.
If you'd like to get started, we have a...
Hey, how about that? I can't see my notes on my own screen, but at least we can see the screen up there. Okay. Good evening, everybody. So, I'm just going to take us through the mid-year data review for the middle school. So, with a lot of these presentations that you've already seen over the last couple nights, if there's some good news in terms of trends between the fall and the winter, we've highlighted those cells in the grids, green. And what I would say, generally speaking, about what we're seeing in terms of the progress in reading, at sixth and seventh grade at the moment, there is a little bit of progress in terms of students moving out of the not-meeting and partially-meeting expectations into the meeting exceeding range, but it's happening at a relatively modest clip. There's a little bit of improvement happening, you can see at the sixth grade. Seventh grade, it's pretty flat between the fall and the winter. Percentage of kids in the, you know, in the different categories has not moved very much. We see a lot more progress at eighth grade, where there's trends moving in the right direction across the board. That's good news to see that. And in math, remember, this is, you know...
Oh, anyway.
So, excuse me? Back up.
Can we just do one at a time, reading first?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so... Yep. So, is there a question you want to ask?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, okay, sure.
So, this is the STAR program again, right?
Yes, it's the same assessment that you heard the high school and Toy Town talking about at the last meeting, and when Ms. Jilson was talking about STAR reading for the second graders and some of the first graders, that's the same adaptive assessment that is being used for the kids once they get out of the early literacy assessment.
So, sixth and seventh grade look relatively flat.
They do.
Seventh is very flat, but sixth grade, it's not moving much either.
Right.
Okay. And then, in eighth grade, we see... Yeah, I guess this, I think your word was modest, so...
Yeah, I mean, I'm very happy to see that, you know, that we, you know, had 18% of the kids in not-meeting expectations in the fall, and that dropped to 12%, you know, in the winter. That's exactly the kind of move that we want to see. Again, fewer students in partially-meeting, and by contrast, you know, we have, you know, now, you know, five kids more who have met expectations and two more are exceeding. So, I think, you know, this is heading in the right direction, but...
Okay. So, the interventions that are being done, Summit program, the whole nine yards, this is what confuses me, is the data doesn't always tell us, as school committee members, the bottom line, like, are the kids making progress? Because you look at one, we got the results of Summit, what, a few months ago? November, December, something like that? And the numbers looked really good, it looked like the kids were really moving forward, we were all happy, yay, team, and all that stuff. And then, we get another report, a STAR report, and we're not seeing anywhere near the type of movement that we saw in the report that we got earlier on the Summit assessment. So, the $65,000 question is, are the kids moving forward? Are they going to be prepared for the next grade and for high school? Are the middle school kids going to be prepared? Like, are the sixth graders going to be prepared for seventh, seventh or eighth? And will the eighth graders be able to survive and thrive at high school? That, I don't, with the information that we have, I couldn't declare one way or the other, because it's kind of cancels each other out.
So, I think the presentation you're probably referring to is that there was a lot of really good news in the fall regarding the progress of the middle school out of accountability status. The school moved from, I don't remember the exact numbers, but it went from like, the ninth percentile or something like that to the 25th percentile.
Yeah.
Last year, their MCAS results were, you know, made a huge positive jump in the right direction. So, but I agree, Larry, that right now, we have questions about what's happening in terms of the progress of the kids in language arts in the sixth and seventh grade. I think, you know, there's a very strong data review process that's built into the kind of routines at the middle school. I'm sure they've been looking at these data and thinking about what does this mean for their intervention process moving forward. There is a slide coming up where I'm going to talk about what they're doing with the data that they have, and that they've just recently gotten from this assessment, so maybe that helps a little bit. But I think the jury's out in terms of what will happen with all the questions, with, you know, kids' preparedness for the next grade level, and of course, you know, how they're going to do this, you know, in this spring's MCAS, we'll have to see. Can I get a...
Larry?
Mr. Chair, one more question. Do we know how our ninth graders are faring in, is that, how are our ninth graders faring at the midpoint?
In terms of, how did they do on the ninth grade STAR reading assessment? I think, actually, I don't remember this, but I think they did quite well, right?
So, you know...
Oh, the ninth graders did not. That's right, it was in math that they were doing better, that's right.
If you recall, our...
Hold on one minute. If you'd like to speak, please come up. Sure.
Can we...
Yeah, come up front.
Are you the data person now, too?
Well, I just wanted to point out, if you recall, at the last meeting, we talked about the STAR assessment, and the day that we tested the ninth graders, we had lost internet and power in the building.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right.
Our freshman English teacher was out for a funeral that week, so we are going to retest the ninth graders, but because the testing results were not good for various reasons.
So, you're going to do it again?
Yes.
When?
Yeah, because we have conferences next week, so it's, they were trying to work it around the conference days.
Maybe the 16th, at our meeting at the 16th, we might know a little bit more on the high school side, because, especially with the new alignment.
I think it's possible. We'll see what we can do. We have a pretty full agenda on the 16th as well, but I know that we're endeavoring to get those tests done, and...
Well, then, we'll be in April, and it won't be much of a mid-year report.
We'll do the best that we can, and I'll work with the chair to make sure that we get the agenda set that we need to present. That's also going to be the big budget presentation hearing night, so that's the only, that's my only hesitancy. But I also wanted to point out the difference between, the data that you're seeing there is 100% about proficiency rates and not about growth. And so, what we saw back in the fall and the things that we celebrated and what we cautioned against was that we celebrate a lot about growth, and what we have seen in our district is, in moving out of certain ratings and that type of thing, has fundamentally been around growth rates and not necessarily proficiency rates. And so, what you're seeing here is proficiency, and where we're at relative to grade-level proficiency, which is why we brought the STAR assessment in, because it's very tied to state standards. And we want to know where our students are relative to proficiency, you know, relative to state standards and state expectations. So, I know that later in this presentation, we have some growth reports, which we do have positive growth, and I think that this is something that Ms. Jilson referenced. You can be inside of any one of these categories relative to proficiency and have exhibited pretty nice growth. It just doesn't mean that you've moved out of one category to a next. So, I believe the final couple of slides reference where we're at relative to growth. And I think the other piece to sort of just reference here very quickly is that, and I think we talked about this last week relative to I Am Math, is that many times, programs have their own assessments. And what we were trying to do in adopting an independent, standards-based assessment is to move away from some of those programmatic assessments that are just, you know, it's the program's own assessment against their program. And so, it's not always surprising that those program assessments often show some pretty nice scores relative to their own programs. And so, we wanted to get sort of an independent, standards-based assessment of how we're doing, and that was one of the reasons that we moved to STAR. So, I just want to make a couple of those clarifications and points. This is about proficiency, not specifically growth.
That's a good explanation.
If I can just, there was the question before about norming, so maybe an interesting way to think about these scores also. So, again, as Ms. Jilson pointed out, we chose to do our benchmarking relative to the state benchmarks. So, when it says here that, you know, 43% of our students in the winter assessment were partially meeting grade level, were partially meeting expectations, that is really predictive, if they had been taking an MCAS test, we might have come up with a very similar number. So, it's giving us a sense of, you know, how our students are doing. It's not relative to a national norm, but it is certainly relative to, you know, the kind of rating system that is used in our state for, you know, for students on our state testing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Greg.
I don't want to beat a dead horse here, because I brought this up at the last meeting that we did, and I'm not going to use the same analogy this time around, but partially-meeting expectations, to me, that means absolutely, to me, that means they're not meeting expectations. To me, it's like putting lipstick on a pig. And I just, you either are or you're not. And in bowling, you get a perfect score with 12 strikes in a row. If you get eight strikes in a row, you don't get a partially-perfect game. You don't get a perfect game. It just sounds like a terminology that was put there to make us feel like we're doing really well when we're not doing as good as we should be.
So, interestingly, these are, these are terms or phrases that were introduced a number of years ago in this, by the state of Massachusetts to replace an earlier set of terms. It was still four categories, but, and I wonder if I can remember them, you know, but at one point, there was, you know...
Failure.
Was I...
The last one was failure.
Yeah, it was failing, and, you know, or, you know, not meeting, or what's not failing, it was, you know, needs improvement. And I think there was a feeling that they wanted to try and, you know, speak about, you know, sort of positive presuppositions of kids' ability to get from partially being there to being there, but, you know, fair enough.
I get, you know, to me, it's just, they're not, there's not meeting expectations, and then there's really not meeting expectations, the two categories.
I think the other piece is, like, when it comes to learning, it's not all or nothing, it's not on or off, right? It's not, it's not a digital analysis. It's not, we need to look at it a little bit more deeply, and maybe that was some of the problems in the earlier pieces. You either failed it, or you didn't fail it, right? And so, if we just look at it from that perspective, we're not actually recognizing and respecting that a kid is on a continuum somewhere towards passing, if you will.
I mean, the growth, I can see growth being that way, but when you set a standard...
But I think the other piece was, in these standards, that meeting expectations, and I'll repeat myself as well, which is, they've met all their expectations at a grade level. This is grade eight. They've met every grade-eight standard, but there's a lot of standards in there. So, that partially-meeting expectations might mean, on some standards, they've hit it, they've nailed it, but other standards, they haven't. And it gives us a way to sort of dig deeper on that data and find out, we don't need to repeat the standards that they've got, we need to get some of those others. And when you get down to not meeting expectations, it probably means they're not meeting any grade-level expectations at grade level. And then, exceeding means what it means, is they're above grade level. So, it's just a way to help us pinpoint where a student is relative to all the standards that they're, that we're responsible for ensuring that they learn.
I guess I just don't want us to interpret that as being more positive than it is. Partially-meeting expectations.
Mr. Chair, Larry, I think, though, if you think about it, let's say that there's 10 standards, and the kids do really, in order to be, as you said, close to per, you get nine out of 10, or 10 out of 10, you get the exceeding. You get seven or eight out of the 10, you get the meeting. So, partially makes sense in the fact that if I started at two and I went up to five, I've made, you know, I got half of the standards, I got five out of the 10 standards, so I'm partially there. And that was the big thing that when I was principal, that when they first came, all this stuff first came out, and they had needs improvement, and they had failure, I, you know, all the principals in the state and superintendents in the state really were angry that we would tell a fourth grader that you're a failure, because you took this one test, this one AMCAST test. But if we said that, you know, we have, you know, X amount of expectations, and you've only hit two out of the 10, and then the next, maybe in the next year, you hit five out of 10, we want to, as the superintendent said, we want to give you some credit that you did make student growth, and you've got, you're halfway there, so that's partially. So, I was okay with that, I just wanted to make sure, you understand?
I get it.
I think it's great. So, we're not trying to say that if you make partially, it's a great thing. No, we want everybody to be, at least, the minimum is meeting expectations.
All right, we're going to move on. Jonathan, please continue.
So, now we're looking at the math outcomes, and I'd say that there, this is a more positive, kind of clearly positive story. You can see at sixth grade, there are two kids who were in the exceeding expectations category at the beginning of the year, who are not there now. Hopefully, they will be again in the spring, but we have made, moved a lot of kids out of the, you know, out of the not-meeting and out of the partially-meeting, or into this partially-meeting expectation. They've shifted in a positive direction there. So, you know, where there were, you know, there were, there's a trend there that we like to see. And if you go to the seventh grade, again, the trend is heading in the right direction, although, again, we are not seeing growth at the exceeding level, and that's also true... And that's also true at the eighth grade, that they, that we're seeing overall a trend in the right direction. And again, though, at the exceeding level, we are not, we are not yet moving kids. This year, we're not moving kids into that exceeding, that exceeding zone. So I'm hoping, you know, that one of the conversations that may, may move things ahead is that, but what's going to take to get some of those kids from that meeting category, you know, accelerated. So Mr. King mentioned the growth, overall growth picture. So this is not a student growth percentile score. I want to be clear. We don't have that aggregate, a student growth percentile score available with STAR. But what, what, what STAR offers is a, a, tells you what percentage of your students had a growth that was at or above a typical growth rate. And they define a typical growth rate as being at an SGP at the 35th percentile or higher. That's a fairly modest, modest, you know, bar. I kind of wish they'd set that bar higher, but they didn't. And, you know, I'm not sure exactly why they do it that way, but it, at least you, this gives you a sense of kind of where we stand. I mean, I think what we're seeing in reading is, you know, if you imagine that you would, you know, in an average school, 65% of your students would have a student growth percentile above the 35th percentile because, you know, then we're, 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 our students are not, are not growing more slowly than students around the country are. But they are certainly not growing faster. And given that, as Dr. King was emphasizing before, we have a lot of students whose overall proficiency is low. We would like to see a more accelerated growth rate than we're seeing. And there's no question about that. In math, we're seeing a healthier growth, growth rate. So just kind of want to sort of give you that, that overall picture. So this is, this is very, this is very much what you'd expect to see, given the slides I was showing you before. So as for how the middle school is using their data, as you, you know, are aware from many presentations that Ms. Zina has made over time, she takes the use of data as a, you know, you know, she's taken, using that, she's taken it very quite seriously over time. So the staff reviews the STAR data. And on the basis of those, those data, they are, set up plans for intervention and also for enrichment during a block that's designated for that. There are also, and, and some of, some of the time, kids are actually placed into skills-based groups where skills have been identified from the STAR data as being, you know, of concern. They get, they get, you know, targeted instruction in those areas. And they're, you know, they've got teachers arrayed to be able to provide that, that targeted skill instruction. They, they go back and forth between a math and a, and a language arts cycle. And you can, this, this year, the cycles are focusing on math skills in, in one cycle, six to eight weeks. And then in the next cycle, they focus in language arts, they're focusing on vocabulary-related work. And then within the regular classroom block, there's also time when teachers are provided targeted instruction that's related to things that have come up through the, through the data. In October, her staff did a deep dive on their MCAS data. And they identified through that process that there were questions that were, that, you know, that, and this is not a new finding, but they, our kids tend to struggle on written responses. That's been true for a while. We'll talk more about some of how we're working in it to address that as a district right now. But so they've, they had, and they noticed especially that kids struggled with idea development and conventions. And so one of the strategies that they've been using is on a regular basis, providing students with a writing prompt and then having students respond during the class period, you know, with a focus on developing idea development and use of, you know, getting their conventions stronger. So they're getting some practice in that area. So their science and technology and engineering data, in the fall, they saw that they, there were certain standards that had, were, were not sources, that where we did not do as well as on others. So they redesigned some of the projects to ensure that those standards, especially earth science standards, would be addressed. And they, in their STEM and PLTW, their project lead the way classes, they're prioritizing specific tech and engineering standards, which were also tested in that eighth grade test where there seemed to be room for, room for growth. And again, the MCAS math assessments have shown that our kids struggle with stamina to be able to work their way all the way through multi-step problems. So built right into tier one instruction this year is more attention to working on those multi-step problems. So that's, that's how they've been trying to work, use the data as they go. So I, I don't know, if there are any, want to open up if there are more questions?
PLTW.
Project Lead the Way is a, a nonprofit, a state, state, a nonprofit that works in lots of schools around the state and offers professional development and provisioning and a kind of, and curriculum for a range of courses that teach kids engineering skills. They have some, they have also some science courses that are kind of, that are sort of engaging courses that sort of lead to careers that are, are interested, things like forensics, that kind of thing. And school districts can partner with them to train up teachers, get all the materials they need in place and then, and then offer those courses. And we have, I said, I think I'm going to say, Mr. King, is it two project lead the way courses in the middle school? I, I think.
I believe so.
Yeah. So two out of, in two out of three years at the middle school, as one of their experiences, kids, kids have a project lead the way course.
Thank you.
I think, I hope I'm getting that right. I think that was the, anyway, yeah.
All right. Great.
Okay.
ELA.
All right. Let me see if I can get another presentation to go where it belongs. Hold on a minute. It's really hard to see what's on that screen because I don't have, yes, look at that. Okay. Okay, so we wanted to provide the committee an update on the work that we have been doing in language arts across the district this year. And actually sort of provide, provide a kind of response to a question like, we had talked in our district improvement plan about taking the district through an, a, an ELA adoption process. And we've, we've moved in a different direction. I know that Mr. King met, talked, spoke to this at a recent meeting. And so we wanted to talk about, well, what are we doing, since we didn't, we didn't move in that direction, what are we doing? So I want to sort of begin by just a real quick recap of what he spoke to you about and maybe provide a little tiny bit more background. But so currently the school, elementary level, at the elementary level, the school district has in place a core language arts program called Wonders 2017. It's a McGraw-Hill product. And in our original district improvement plan, we had talked about going through an adoption process to replace that. And at the middle school through Summit, we have a lot of units of study that come from the Expeditionary Learning Program that have been sort of modified by the Summit folks over time. At the high school, each language arts, each English course has its own sort of, you know, locally designed English, you know, core curriculum, course curriculum that was developed by the, the, the teachers locally for that, for that course, sometimes using, you know, some kind of national curriculum product. But it's, it's, you know, high schools typically are less likely to have adopted a core that's changing some now, but that's mostly the way it's, it's been, and it mentioned is like other places. So that's kind of, that's kind of the current state of affairs. We had planned to undertake this, this ELA core program review this year. And as Doc, as Mr. King explained, we stepped away from that plan for a variety of reasons. We recognized that was a need to, and this is really kind of the, the heart of it. We recognized that there was a need to improve the alignment of our current language arts instruction to the rigorous demands of the state's standards as a kind of initial and really important step that we have a lot of data that says that at different places, our instruction isn't yet providing students the kinds of tasks and experiences that are a match for the rigor of the standards. The standards are very rigorous. And we're, I'm going to show you a little bit more about what I mean by that in, in the next few minutes. And that one of the things we really need to do is to have teachers engage with the standards in a very intense way to fully understand like what it takes to really get kids to those standards and to become, to give them a chance to kind of wrestle with that collectively in a, in a meaningful way before we start thinking about what product we might want to use to get the kids there. Because we need to understand what it takes to get the kids there really well before we start trying to decide which programs that are out there might actually be the best tools for us to get them there. So that was part of the conversation. The other thing that is, that we recognized as, and actually it was some of the data that came from the, the process of inviting people to participate in a, in a, in an adoption process. When we put out the call for faculty to participate in the adoption process, there was, there was very few people who signed up for the process. It was a very small number of teachers who, who, who got back to us. And that was a pretty telling, kind of voting with, with their feet that teachers did. They were really, really busy, right? They were coming out of this intensive year of the pandemic. We were implementing a new math program, which was a tremendous amount of professional development and work to do. There were other things going on in individual buildings, other kinds of initiatives that were underway. And teacher, and teachers were dealing with a tremendous range of social emotional issues on the part of kids. And as we've talked about a lot in these meetings. And there was, there was, I think, just a general sense that this was, this was an enormous thing to bite off. So enormous, so it was too much, too much, too, too much to bite off and chew this year. So I think there was that information. And our own sense of what was going on in the schools led us to say, you know what? The timing is also, is also not great for this. So there was all that stuff that kind of went into a rethinking about whether this was the right time to do that. So that did not mean however, that we were not very serious about continuing to improve our language arts instruction and performance. And it's really just a matter of talking about what's the right order of operations to get ourselves where we need to go. So we decided we wanted to put off that adoption and continue and, and move into some other, other very important work. So I want to talk about the current focus of our ELA improvement work. And then speak somewhat, somewhat a little bit, little bit more briefly about a potential near-term next steps and what we might be, what we might be up, what we will be doing next, but also some of the things we might potentially be doing next. So in terms of the current focus, and this, this is kind of an overview slide, and then I'm going to go into a lot more depth about this in the, in the slides that follow. So there are three big areas of work that we are engaged in right now. The first is that we are doing this standards alignment work that I was just talking about a moment ago. And I'm going to show you in a little bit more detail what we mean by that. And it, there's, it's really happening in, in two different ways. We're talking about a standard alignment work, horizontal alignment work. And when we talk about horizontal alignment, we talk about getting all the teachers that are given grade level working in the, understanding together what it means to address their grade level standards and doing that, right? We talk about vertical alignment. That's the other half of this project. We're talking about improving the, the coherent sequencing in which skills are introduced across the grade level, starting with our youngest children and working all their way, all the way up. So we're going to talk about what's happening in the standards alignment work. The second thing that is continuing is this strengthening of our foundational literacy instruction, which as, as you were hearing from Ms. Jilson, is starting to show some tremendous positive results. And I'm actually going, Greg, you asked this question earlier about the longitudinal picture. And I actually have a couple of slides in here that I think will, will help to see how this work that we've been doing around foundational literacy is starting to pay these dividends now. So we'll get, we'll get to that in a few minutes. And then the other thing that we started this year that we are really very excited about as well is we have introduced, and this goes, and this is in direct response to the kind of data we were just talking about with the middle school. This, we've had longitudinal data that our kids are not strong writers. It shows up in MCAS. It also shows up in our local, our local writing work, that what the kids produce in their writing. And we've for a long time had in our minds this burning need to go back and, and work together, to learn together about how to do, how to, how to be, provide stronger writing instruction in the school district. And in fact, for my first year here, there were teachers who came to me and talked to me about the fact that had been, they could, they'd never had any writing professional development or they couldn't remember the last, or it had been, you know, 10 or 15 years since there'd been professional development that they, that, you know, in a meaningful way around writing, writing instruction. And we just needed to find the time and space to get that started. And this year, the space was there and we've gotten that going. And I'm going to tell you about this approach that we're using, which is called self-regulated strategy development. That's a mouthful or SRSD. And I'll break that down, what that means in a couple of minutes when we get to looking at that in more detail. And then the second thing we're going to talk about is some near-term next steps. And this is probably not the right, exactly the right heading. This probably should have said near-term next steps and potential near-term next steps because some of these things are definitely happening. And some of them are things we're starting to talk about as potential next steps for, for the work. So specifically, we're, one of the next term, near-term next steps that's definitely going to be happening is we've been doing this writing work from grades three through 12, starting this year. And we are going to begin doing it with our youngest kids as well. We held off work, doing this with K through two because of the work that was going on with foundational literacy as well as the math work in that building and feeling like it was just too much to pile on to bring in the writing work in that, in, at that level this year. And then there's some other things that are possible. We, we, several years back, we did some curriculum mapping work at Toy Town. We at the time did not have the funds to do it at the memorial building. There's a possibility we might think about doing some curriculum mapping work in that building so that we have a map that goes all the way from kindergarten to fifth grade. And there's also a conversation about whether there might be some additional mapping work to do that would bring in this writing stuff in a more meaningful way into those maps. So that's another, that's a potential near-term, a, a next step. And then there's a conversation that I've been having recently with the principal of the high school and with, and with Ms. Zina about the idea of developing a cross-disciplinary scope and sequence of writing and research skills, tasks, skills and tasks at the secondary level. So we start to be able to map out when, when are there going to be opportunities for kids to do more extended writing and, and, and more extended research experiences and to develop those skill sets as they're moving through the secondary level. So those are some of the things that are, that are coming up. So, and or potentially coming up depending on the item. So let's go into the current focus of improvement in more detail. So aligning the instruction, our instruction to the demands and standards. So why does this matter? I've started to talk about this a little bit, but we've got this long history of underperformance, which we've talked about for years at this, at this committee. Standards are really challenging. I'm going to give you a little illustration of that in a moment. And as I was also mentioning, there's been an observable gap that we've seen in, in walkthroughs, in supervision, just in our, you know, historically, there's been an observable gap between what we've expected of our students. And when I say that, what I mean is the kinds of tasks kids have been doing in our classrooms and the kinds of things that they need to be doing if they're going to actually meet the standards. So we've seen that over time. And closing that gap is going to give students the opportunity to do the kinds of work that would enable them to practice those hard things and get, get better at them so that they actually can meet the standards. So, and then there's this other huge reason for this, which is that figuring out how to meet the standards, those demands is, is just tremendously powerful professional learning for the teachers, that, for, for all of us, for the administrators as well. This is not something that's just on the teachers. All of us need to be learning how to do this. It helps us to strengthen both our planning and our instructional skill sets. So how do we do this? So I just wanted to kind of lay out what this looks like. So just to take an example for them from, yes, sorry.
Just a quick question. So talking about working on instruction.
So talking about working on instruction before having what is likely to be a new ELA curriculum at some point in the future, when you have a curriculum, and a curriculum is a, a comprehensive set of tools that you're going to use to, to instruct, you know, doesn't that inform instruction? Doesn't that change your instruction? And how is it that you're improving instruction and then bringing a curriculum without the expectation your instruction will change again?
So, great question. And it's, so first of all, I want to say one, one thing to be really clear. Then when we talk about wonders, for example, we're not actually talking about a curriculum. We're talking about a core program and there's, there's a distinction there. When we talk about curriculum, we're talking about a clearly, a clear design that lays out what it is, what is the content and what is the material that kids are going to be learning and what are the tasks kids are going to be going through in, in a year. These language arts core programs are actually enormous and they include ideas about what needs to be taught to hit the standards. But there's a tremendous amount of planning and actually additional curriculum work, like the curriculum mapping I was just mentioning, that has to go into figuring out how to use those materials to actually deliver a curriculum. So it is, it's a, it's a resource set out of which you can, you can then provide, provide a curriculum, a full, you know, the, the, the actual arc of learning that the kids get. So we have plenty of resources available. They're not always perfect and we are definitely going to need, as we go through this, this standards alignment process, to supplement the stuff that we have where the teachers feel like what we have now is, is not engaging enough or rigorous enough. And so there are places where the current materials are not perfect, there's no question. But, but there are plenty of materials there as, to build the curriculum out of, especially when we supplement. And as we go through this learning experience and practicing teaching standards-aligned lessons in a, in a way that are, that really meets, helps the kids to get to the standards, teachers are going to get a clearer and clearer idea of what it really takes, all the things it really take, it takes to get the kids there. And they're going to have a discussion about that. And so that when we actually go to then vet the next material set that we buy, we're going to be in a position to say, are these things the things that are going to, that we can put into place to actually deliver? There are now some very highly rated, high-quality materials that are more like a curriculum. They're closer to, in, in language arts, closer to being a curriculum. The illustrative mathematics program we bought and brought in for mathematics actually is a curriculum. It says day-to-day, virtually, this is, this is, this is exactly what you need to do. There's language arts programs that are getting closer to that. But even when we get those, the, that next high-quality instructional material set in language arts, there will still be kind of a curriculum decision-making process with it because there's just so many more moving parts in language arts. It's not, it's not all packaged. I'm not sure, is that, there's a lot in that answer, I'm not sure if that gets all the way there.
One last related question. How do you comprehensively improve and/or align instruction across many different teachers when, again, in anticipation of what will be a new curriculum that will arrive later? How, how do you do that?
That's what I'm about to try and describe a little bit of. And I want to just say, I don't, I don't want to minimize the challenge, right? This is something that school districts everywhere have a tremen, it's a tremendously challenging process to get teachers, all teachers at a grade level, as we're going to just look at here, to the point where they, they are rowing in the same direction in the same, using the same pacing, using the same tech, effective techniques to actually get the kids where they're collaborating on how to make those techniques work for the, the students that they have in front of them. It's, this is extremely challenging work for the teachers, for, you know, for, for the folks who are trying to, trying to guide that work along, it's, it's, it's very hard and, you know, it's, it's made always much more challenging by the fact that there's staff turnover, you know, and unpredictable things that come up along the way. But I think this next set of slides are going to give a little bit of that illustration. All right. So this is just an example. So what might a horizontal articulation process look like? So just, just, so what we're starting with is this idea that we're unpacking key standards. And we're being supported in this work this year by a wonderful language arts guru, her name is Grace Way. She's somebody who actually, it just so happens that Mr. King and I both have had experience working with her in past lives in different places in our careers. And she's been modeling this kind of a process for us this year and helping us to learn how to do this well. So just, let's take an example, right? So let's imagine a fourth grade standard in, one of the reading standards for literature. This is just one of the standards in the state frameworks, right? This one is a reading standard, reading RL standard, RL 4.9. And just look at the language of the standard. Compare and contrast the treatment of similar themes and topics, for example, the opposition of good and evil, and patterns of events, for example, the quest in stories, myths, and traditional literature from different cultures. That is one of the many standards in fourth grade, right? So the way this process might work in, at a grade level meeting where we are working on this horizontal, horizontal articulation and on this standards alignment process, imagine that this is a standard that some upcoming lessons are going to be working on, right? In anticipation of that, all the teachers at the grade level, this is this piece about aligning, getting to that horizontal alignment where the teachers are pulling in the same direction, working in the same way. The teachers will sit down together in a room and they might begin at a grade level meeting, talking about what goes into meeting this, this one standard that's going to be a focus of the work moving forward. Now, I'm just going to just give you some of the things that might come up in that conversation, right? And it really takes time to really think this through. But, you know, in this, in this one standard, we need to explore, okay, what, what all the things have to happen? Well, the kids are going to need to understand what a theme is, right? Let's set aside topics, that's a whole other, that's a whole other conversation, right? They have to understand what a theme is. They're going to have to be able to pick the theme out in a, in pieces of literature, pick themes out in the piece, in pieces of literature. And they're going to have to have strategies for doing that. They're going to have to be able to discern how the writer conveyed that theme through characterization, plot, descriptive language, metaphor, all these other things. You have to understand enough about those, those kinds of techniques so that they're going to actually see how those, those, those are used to, to, to convey a theme. They're going to have to know how to find similarities in how a common theme is conveyed in two or more pieces of literature and what the authors have to say about it in those pieces, right? And they're going to have to have, find the evidence in the text that shows that, right? They have to know, they have to be able to compare and actually pull out the evidence because they're going to have to use that evidence when they, when they demonstrate that they're, when they, when they make this comparison, this contrast. They're going to have to, so they're going to have to find those similarities. They also have to be able to find the differences in how that common theme is conveyed. They're going to have to be able to organize those thoughts into an outline and then, and then into writing about those thoughts, probably one paragraph at a time, one piece of that, 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 that explanation at a time. And they're going to have to be able to organize, pull it all together into an organized essay, right? Then, right, there are all sorts of questions. What does our data, and I, and that includes examples of students' written work, right? What does it tell us about which of these skills our students already have and which skills they don't yet have? Is there, is there a question or something you, you'd like me to, should I keep going? I just want to make sure.
Yep.
Okay, all right, okay. You're going to have to see, do we have exemplars which we can share with the students to help them see what it, what it looks like to hit this target, to actually show, hit this target? And if we don't have those exemplars, we either need to find them, we need to create them so we can show students what this is going to look like, right? And then the teachers have, having figured out what all goes into hitting that standard, next the teachers have to think, figure out what's it going to take to help our students develop the skills that they still need to develop. Our data hopefully tells us that they can do some of these things, but our data is also going to tell us some of these things they can't do yet. What is the arc of learning experiences that the kids are going to have to go through to get each of those sub-skills that they're going to need in order to be able to put it all together and be able to do this, right? So that's what would happen in that, in that standards unpacking process. And in the process of doing that, collectively, those teachers are putting together a shared plan and then they're trying that plan out. And then they're bringing the student work back from that plan and they're looking to see, is this working? So this is the kind of experience that we are currently giving our teachers around horizontal alignment and, and standards alignment work. Okay? So the other half of this is the vertical articulation piece. And so again, this vertical articulation is what does it take to get that coherent arc of learning across, across the grades? And so what is that about? Well, what have we done so far with that? So what we've been doing so far with that is, and this is a process that, again, that our consultant Grace Way has taken us through, but we re-familiarize ourselves with the Massachusetts Curriculum Frameworks Guiding Principles. And just to give you a couple of examples, there's a number of guiding principles. Here's just a couple of them. Guiding principle number two is that to become successful readers, students need to develop a rich academic vocabulary and broad background knowledge. And the third guiding principle, just to take one more example, educators should help students develop a love of reading by selecting high-quality works of literature, nonfiction, reading aloud in class. So we wanted to go back to those guiding principles because we want to make sure that across all of our grade levels, we are building an approach to literacy that actually aligns with those principles, right? And that we're doing that not just at some grade levels, but across all of our grade levels. So that was the first thing that the teachers did. And then the second thing that they did was that they, by grade level, had a conversation about what are the critical things we need students to know and be able to do when they arrive in third grade or in fourth grade? And what do we believe are the critical things we need to have taught them that they didn't come into third grade with, that they need to have by the time they leave third grade or they leave fourth grade? So the critical ins and outs. And we walked through a process where the teachers thought about the ins and the outs at their own grade level and then a kind of sharing cross-grade level process where the teachers got to hear from the grade levels above and below them, what did the people they work, that they're getting the kids from and the kids that they're sending the kids to have to say about that. And at the end of that process, the teachers created a visual picture where all the grade levels had a section of this big flow chart that they, that they worked on and they were talking to their neighbors on either side and they were looking to see, okay, what do we, what, what, what do we, you know, expect from the, from the kids coming up to us and what do we need to make sure that we are delivering on by the time they leave us? And all the teachers got to see that across, across the grade span. So that's what we've been doing this year in, in, to try and get ourselves more deeply engaged with the standards. Okay. So where are we now? Where are we going? We've had, I want to say, three or four engagements for each grade level with Grace Way, where she's walked them through these experiences. And we've had this big vertical articulation conversation. And where we're going with this is we are going to keep going with this work. We need, we need more time, we haven't had a lot of practice with it yet. We need to keep going, we need to keep building these muscles, we need to keep building these routines at the grade levels and across the grade levels so that over time, we are, we have a chance to look at more and more of the standards in this way and with this analytic process and come to shared, a shared approach to tackling them. So it is our, very much our intention to continue working this way through common planning in the year to come. And we want to expand this to the secondary level as appropriate. Here's the second big area of, you know, this is the second piece of current work, right? Continued strengthening of foundational literacy instruction. So we've been deeply involved in this this year and over a number of years. So I just want to sort of, kind of, sort of go through the arc of what has been done in this area. So in 20, actually, this is not quite in, in chronological order. In 2019, 2020, we didn't have enough money to adopt a, a foundational literacy program across the whole elementary system, but we brought in foundations as a new phonics program for our kindergarten. And at the time, the intention was to keep rolling that up. But when I, when we adopted foundations, it was before there was good information out there about what evidence-based programs were available to introduce, to teach foundational literacy skills at the, at the, at the tier one level, in other words, in, in general ed classrooms. And that information became available during that year. So in 2019, 2020, we introduced foundations. In 2020, 21, the district, the memorial school participated in an early literacy grant with it, which had a huge focus on professional development on evidence-based approaches to foundational literacy, literacy skills instruction. And it was a tremendous learning experience for teachers. It was challenging because of, because of the pandemic, a lot, and, and also other logistical reasons, a lot of the professional development for that was, was virtual, which was hard for people. But, you know, Ms. Jolson was talking earlier about how hard the teachers in her building have been working to get these results. One of the ways that the teachers in that, in that building have been working extremely hard over time is to learn evidence-based approaches to foundational literacy instruction. So that has included the adoption of foundations in 2019, 20, and enhanced core reading instruction, which we adopted in 2021, 22, and have continued to provide support in professional development on implementation of this, this year as well. So we had that initial adoption 2019, we had that early literacy grant in 2020, we brought ECKRi in the next year and have continued to support it this year. And then also last year, we brought in intensive professional development in the Orton-Gillingham approach that was brought in to be, so we would have a re, again, an evidence-based approach to intervention for kids who were way behind. And that's what the Orton-Gillingham approach is. And we also got a training in how to use a particular slice of Orton-Gillingham, which is tier one general ed classroom foundational skills instruction that can be introduced at the upper grades. And so this year at Toy Town, the Toy Town teachers have been, have been bringing in an Orton-Gillingham program in the, in the general ed classrooms in third, fourth, and fifth grade to support kind of the phonics that's left over, that kids have not, have come up them not having, and also to address some of the word work and other kinds of skills that they didn't, that they had, that are for older students. So.
When you say upper grades for OG, you mean upper elementary grades?
Upper elementary grades, thank you, sorry. Yeah, actually, yeah, thank you for that clarification. So I believe you guys received a handout that shows the work that we've done to clarify our assessment program. Did, did, did they get that? I sent that to Liz, but yes, there it is, great.
The single page.
We don't, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but there was a lot of work that went in over the last year that went into figuring out at tier one, what screening assessments we need to use to make sure that we are checking that kids are getting all of the different skills, developing all the skills that they need to put it all together to be able to become fluent readers. And you can see there's many different skills that we have to be looking for. A lot of them are tested by DIBELS, but not all of them, right? And, and this is also helping us to screen for kids who may have dyslexia. And we now have a systematic approach to, to, to screening for all of these different pieces, which we had to pull together, it was a complicated process. And then most recently, I mentioned, you'll see, we have these different foundational skills programs. We have foundations in kindergarten, ECKRi at first and second grade, and now we're using OG at, at the Toy Town building. So there's, so one of the other things we've now done is articulated the skills, the kids who are taking foundations in kindergarten, additional skills they need to get in order to be ready for ECKRi when they get to first grade. So you put all those pieces together, it's a lot of moving parts, and you already have heard a lot about this data, but what I wanted to speak to, and this is, gets to the longitudinal question that, that Greg was asking. You can see here the year when major changes were made to instruction and curriculum by grade. And if you look, kindergarten got foundations in the 2020 school year, right? And already that year, and if we, unfortunately, I don't have these, I don't have the 2019-20 data here, but if I went back, it would have been red across the board, right? We did not make progress that previous year. When we introduced foundations and lots and lots of training and lots of support for, the teachers did so much to get ready and to do that program well, right? Look what happened. We, this is, the percentage of kids who are well below or below benchmarks, it came down between the beginning and the middle of the year by eight percent in 2021, nine percent the next year, and this, this year it's come down by 15%. You can see, right, how we brought this stuff in and it started to make a difference. And in 21, 22, we brought in ECKRi, which is the program we're using in first and second grade. Before that, you can see, between the beginning, middle of the year, the number of students who were in, at risk went up significantly. who were in, at risk went up significantly those years. It was going exactly the wrong direction. We brought in this foundational approach, the teachers, again, worked so hard to put these new practices in place. They were just incredible. And you can see, they, they made the shifts, they were so motivated to see these changes for the kids. And you can see that what happened. We, we've had this tremendous turnaround. So this is, this collection of investments that has really paid off. And again, we've brought in this year, we brought in this Orton-Gillingham piece at Toy Town, and this is a reminder from the last session, right? This is one of the slides, the data from the last session. You can see again, now that we brought this, this OG piece in, we're getting progress that we've not seen at Toy Town either. And this is, this is only part of the, the picture of what's happening at Toy Town, but this is, this is the reading score, and you can see that the numbers are moving in the right direction. So these, these critical pieces that were missing, it's not that the teachers weren't working hard before, they were, but they didn't have all of the, the skills, they didn't have all of the tools they needed to be able to get where they needed to go. So.
Dr. Landman, thank you. The, I have a question about the partially meeting expectations. I'm absolutely kidding. That was really good. We are very interested in the next steps. I wonder if we could, you know, jump over the SRSD and go to the next steps?
Okay. So you don't want to hear about writing tonight?
SRSD, if you want to give us the, you know, definition of it, that'd be helpful.
But, and then, okay. And we'll, we can come back another night to SRSD. I mean, okay, why don't we, would you like me to just skip it all together and we'll do it another night? Or do you, what do you, what are you asking for? Or do you want me to give you the definition and then move on?
Definition and move on.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. So, oh, so this is the new approach to, to writing that we are introducing into the school district. And I, I, I just, we're just, there's just a high level of excitement about this, right? This is, as, as of now, the only scientifically proven approach to writing instruction. There are now a couple of hundred studies which have proven that if you use this approach to provide writing instruction, it will improve students' writing skills and their outcomes. And this has been shown now all the way from kindergarten through college. And this is interesting, this was originally was developed as something to do with special education students, and then it was tried out with students in general ed setting and was found to be tremendously impactful for them as well. It's, one of the things I find fascinating as a, as a, as a curriculum instruction wonk is that all of the components of SRSD, of this self-regulated strategy development approach, are actually themselves evidence-based instructional practices which have been shown to be effective in other areas that have nothing to do with writing. These are things like giving students a chance to example, analyzing exemplars of, of, of writing and figure out what is, that went right in somebody else's writing before they do their own. Teachers modeling their own thinking as they do some writing. Internalizing routines that you then practice using, et cetera. And specifically, one of the parts of this definition is self-regulation. This is self-regulated strategy development. One of the things that's really unique about SRSD, writing is one of the most difficult things that we do in life. It's one of the most cognitively complex things that exists in human, in human, you know, behavior. And as a consequence, it's very easy for, for people to get discouraged when they start writing. It's very easy to feel like it's too hard, I can't do it. So what SRSD has introduced is a self-regulation process where students are monitoring how they're feeling about their writing and talking about it. And they are get, analyzing their own current practice and setting goals for themselves and then regu, monitor, monitoring their own progress towards their own goals. And it has been shown, this is again, an evidence-based practice that's been used across instructional practices, and when it's used in this writing context, it is tremendously helpful to kids to help them to learn how to persist and to keep, keep going until they really learn it and get good at it. So that's the definition in short.
Thanks so much.
Or not in long, not short. Okay. So where are we going? Were you wanted to go to, I'm skipping that. We're going to next steps?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay. Near term, right? And potential near-term next steps. So in addition to continuing this, this standards alignment work and continuing to support the implementation of SRSD, which is going to take time, it is challenging, it's a steep learning curve for teachers to learn how to use these SRSD techniques. We also plan to extend that standards alignment, vertical, horizontal articulation work to the secondary level as, as needed, and we're going to continue it at the elementary level. And we're going to implement SRSD at K through two. And then to the question you were asking before, Ryan?
Yes.
We're going to supplement existing language arts resources as needed in the lead-up to whenever we get to the place we're ready to do the adoption process so that where we see things, we, the, we, tools we don't have that we need, we'll get them. And then there's some things that we potentially may do, and I say this because I think these are really likely to happen, but we haven't socialized them entirely, haven't had a chance to talk them all the way through and figure out whether we really have the bandwidth to do them. So there's this potential for continuing this curriculum mapping that I've talked about, and this development of a cross-disciplinary scope and sequence of writing and research skills and tasks at the secondary level. And then the last thing is, longer term, come back to this question about revisiting and undertaking a language arts program adoption when we are ready. And that's, that's what I got.
All right. Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Landman.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. King, anything else tonight?
I don't have any, not on the superintendent's report, no.
All right. Thank you. All right. That does bring us to our subcommittee reports. And up first, we have possibly a report from the Joint Committee on Cost-Revenue Sharing.
Do you want to take this? You're better schooled at this than I am.
Am I?
Oh, yeah.
I don't know.
I'll be your wingman.
Been looking for one of those. I, I think, you know, we've, we've met again, I think I did miss a meeting a couple of weeks ago, but I, I think we're, we're zeroing in on a couple of, of items where I think next meeting, Greg, we had said that we were going to try to come to some sort of conclusion. You know, we're looking at two things. One is some work around personnel sharing in general that I think we're getting relatively close on agreement that it's something that we want to pursue with, with our facilities directors retirement. So trying to look at a, a different approach to sharing resources, sharing personnel so that we can improve our efficiencies across the district and maybe save a few dollars between the town, excuse me, across the community, being the town and the district, and save a few dollars along the way. So I think we're getting pretty close to pinning that down in terms of coming to some level of an agreement on that. In terms of the, the revenue sharing, I think we still have some work to do there is, is the, is the most honest way to say it, is that we still have some work to do there. I think there's, there's still some distance there. You might have something more to add, Greg?
No, 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 that, you're right. I mean, we're looking at, I guess, a couple of alternatives that I think would be premature to, to bring them up here now, but, oh, sorry. We're looking at some alternatives in terms of revenue sharing, but it would be premature to bring those up here tonight. I don't think it would be irresponsible to, to do that. So after the next meeting, probably for the 16th meeting of the school committee, we'll have a few more details for you.
Great.
Any questions? Larry?
I don't.
All right. Thank you for that. Calendar Committee?
Calendar Committee is almost there. We have a couple of new recommendations made in the last day or two that we need to review as a committee. So we'll set our meeting and hopefully at our next one, we can just do a quick vote and we'll be done. So we'll set a meeting, so on the 16th, hopefully we could just take a quick vote. Just, there were three really good suggestions that were made yesterday, I think, or the day before, and we need to review them as a committee, but I think they're, they're reasonable and they're going to be accepted, but we need to do that first.
All right. Good deal. Any questions?
Nope.
Only other subcommittee update I think we have might be the Policy Subcommittee, which is that the Policy Subcommittee will be meeting on Friday, March 17th, at 2:00 PM at Town Hall on the fourth floor, and that will be publicly announced through the normal, the normal posting process in the near future. And I think that's it for subcommittees. Bringing us to New Business and the Murdoch High School Program of Studies.
We should have moved her up.
And we'll welcome Principal Rickson up and.
We should have done that next time.
Yeah, we should have moved her up.
There is a full committee up here feeling guilty about not moving you up earlier in the agenda, so thank you very much for staying all night.
Oh, that's okay. Just, there's a few, 27 changes, which most of them are just cleaning up some language, taking out some verbiage. For example, if you take a look at number two, it says MCAS graduation requirement. In the past, it had, actually had an MCAS score. Now we just, you know, took out the, that language of 220 to say meet the expectations. We are adding two new classes, the History of Film and the History of Hip-Hop. Those are, we have two brand-new history teachers, social studies teachers, and they're very excited to bring those into the, into the district because they find that interesting. A couple of classes we're deleting, we're deleting all of our foundations classes, ELA, math, science, and social studies, because again, we want to increase the rigor and there's really, we have an integrated math for one and two for the students who may need the extra supports early on, but basically, you know, Algebra I was really, we'd like to start at Algebra I, geometry, and move forward that way. So we're getting rid of the foundation classes. At ELA, we have ninth grade English, that can go across the board. Same, same with science, you know, biology, chemistry, physics, exactly the same. And then social studies, really, there's really not the need for that. It, it doesn't fit the frameworks. As Common Core really beefed up a lot of the, the rigor, so we had to just continue with, you know, US one, US two, you know, world, and then your electives. Basically, that's really all we have. Just trying to think if anything else that you, oh, we, graphic communications is now gone. I know it seems odd, but I believe it was out a couple of years ago. When Mr. Collins came in, he brought in the Blue Devil Weekly, which fits the standards a little bit better, so we kind of evolved into that particular class. And then a couple of science classes, Principles of Chemistry and the Principles of Environmental Science. We actually have those particular classes, Chemistry and Environmental Science, so we don't really need the Principles. And that's really, you know, a couple new pieces of literature, nothing outrageous, so they're getting rid of 1984, but basically, that's about it. I'm trying to think of anything that would stand out. Oh, also adding sports management class. I forgot to say that.
That, that's pretty cool.
That'd be a cool class, for sure.
Larry?
The social studies. So you remove social studies foundations.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And you're adding sports management. So walk me through the progression from freshman. So I'm a freshman, what am I taking for social studies?
You are taking US one, then you take US two. Oh, you take world history, US one, and US two. That's how, how that works in, in history. And then the other ones are all electives.
Okay.
Ninth grade, you take world history, or actually, ninth grade, you take US one, 10th grade, you take US two.
US two.
And then you take world history.
World history.
And then the rest of the histories are all electives.
They're all electives.
Yep.
Okay. Is there advanced placement?
Oh, we have APUSH. That, that's, that's advanced placement classes are still here. We didn't change that. We had AP History.
You have AP History.
Yep. There is an AP History.
So no civics? What happened to the civics?
The civics is embedded in the actual, we have a civics guide that actually our teachers are working on, on, and on March 10th to, at the middle school, they've done a really good job integrating it into the actual curriculum. But the Massachusetts DSE Frameworks states that there has to be civics projects in, in all of those particular classes generally. So the teachers will be integrating those civics projects within the classes.
I just want to say, I'm appreciative of the removal of the foundations courses and the principals courses. As someone that spends a lot of time looking at high school transcripts, that can be detrimental to a high school student as they're considering both undergraduate and graduate admission. Of course, the curriculum, you want it to be strong, you want it to be your college preparatory curriculum, or honors, or whatever it is that you've got it set at, but those words, just the existence of those words on a transcript is problematic for a student. In addition to the decisions you've made about the curriculum, that's, that's prudent and, and great to see.
Larry, a lot of the civics, eighth grade is where the civics, it takes place.
Well, I think what we've heard, and we had this debate a couple of years ago, when we were looking at the program of studies, we really, I, I don't think you can just embed it in there because they need a foundational base of how our government works on the local, state, and national level. And to, to piecemeal it throughout three different years, which I, I would, I would like to see how that's done. I mean, I don't, I, I taught social studies, and I taught civics for, I don't know, 10 years or so at the high school level here in town. And now, when I left many years ago, you know, civics kind of fell off the, with all the MCAS testing and everything, social studies took a hit and it got lost in the shuffle. And we tried to bring it back, and we're not the only district, a lot of districts are clamoring to bring it back. Civics and, and financial literacy, those are two that I think are much more valuable and increase the rigor of your curriculum than sports management. I don't know whenever a kid is going to use sports management. We've got kids from Winchon that did take sports management, and they're doing a lot of other things other than sports management. I think that there's, to increase rigor, the things that kids really need to be a productive student, a productive citizen in the world, understanding how your government works in an intensive way, not just piecemeal along the way with a project. They need to understand how the world works, especially in the political climate that we're in now. They need to know how things work. And so I.
And why?
And why, right? To become an, an informed voter and whatnot and with all the social media stuff, people don't even, they talk about the First Amendment, they don't even know what it is. They talk about the Second Amendment. They, they don't even understand what it is, they just throw it out there. So it's, it's something that I think, I'm not a fan of these kinds of things. I remember when Virtual High School came out and they had 250 courses and everyone was jumping up and down, yeah, the history of Michael Jackson and stuff like that. That's not rigor. Financial literacy, kids don't know, and many adults don't know how to manage their money. $30 trillion in debt, United States consumers, $30 million in debt. And we keep expanding credit more and more. It's crazy. People don't understand how, how the money system works and how to do their own finances. We, we need courses like financial literacy, civics, and some of those.
We do have financial literacy.
We don't need sports management, and we don't need foundations of social studies, which I'm glad you get rid of. I just, I, I think you can do better.
Okay.
I would not support, I would not support sports management. And play, unless we could fit it in with civics and financial literacy and maybe some others that you feel are really important that I didn't hit tonight, but those are the two that stand out in my mind, just looking at the world.
Again, we aren't looking at the, we have a, something that was given to us by the state, so the social studies department will be working on that, civics projects, starting in March 10th. So hopefully we'll have, we can actually probably talk to you about that as we, as we get through the rest of the year, for sure.
If I may, just a couple of quick things. One is that I want, I just want to point out, sports management isn't elective. We still have the graduation requirement of, as was discussed in this room, like you mentioned, I don't know, two or three years ago, and has not changed, is that you must take world, US one, and US two. That, that's a graduation requirement that has not changed. We do have a, and, and just to stay at the. If I may, just a couple of quick things. One is that I want, I just want to point out, sports management isn't elective. We still have the graduation requirement of, as was discussed in this room, like you mentioned, I don't know, two or three years ago, and has not changed, is that you must take world, US I, and US II. That's a graduation requirement that has not changed. We do have a, and just to stay at the high school level for just a second, we do have a personal finance class that we teach, and I believe the teacher is sitting right over there, and that is fairly well-attended and registered for. So those class, those things have not changed, and there's no vision for them to change. Relative specifically to civics, DESI has made a lot of changes to actual civics requirements on the school districts across the state. And one of those requirements is very specific, that a formal civics class must be taught at eighth grade. And we do that here. The other requirement from DESI at this point is a little bit vague, and it's specific to these projects that are supposed to be, by DESI regulation, if you will, maybe that's not the right word, incorporated through your coursework with projects as a result. Those are just the DESI guidelines that we're trying to follow, and I think that's what you're showing here tonight. And I think that the other pieces here are just reflections of some student interests, which are electives and are not, again. Those are not pieces that are, would count towards graduation requirement. They would still have to take all of their typical history classes that we've always taught and will continue to teach. So I just want to be really clear on what those items are, what we currently have, and why we have them, and where they currently live.
And I thank you for that, Mr. Chair. And I thank you for that explanation, but I don't like it. I didn't like it three years ago. I don't like it now. I think civics should be a full-year course. I think you could do the US history. I taught it for many years. You can do it in one year, US history. So you do whatever sequence that you want to do it in, world history, civics, US history, and then electives, like a finance, something with constitutional class, a course on the Constitution just by itself. That could be an elective. You know, every time I hear people, like, I won't name names, but some of our political people talk about the Constitution, they are constitutional lawyers, and they don't even know what they're talking about. So I think to be a fully engaged citizen of our nation, we need to spend more time on those kinds of things. They can get sports management if they want to major in it in college or somewhere else, but they really need, to be a functioning citizen of our society, they need an intensive full-year course on civics, and they need some kind of financial literacy. I don't, Andrew, I don't know how many kids that you go through, but every kid should go through, every single kid that goes to Murdoch should go through a financial literacy class. They should, because they got to know how to handle their money and what it means. And we don't do that. So I'm going to get off my soapbox, but, and I'm only naming those two things. I mean, other people may have other things that they think, but I can't go with the sports management, especially when you talk about academic rigor. That's not academic rigor.
I believe this is a, this is an information item for us. Great, great information. A lot of, it sounds like, you know, some concerns about some certain areas that I think you've taken in and you're going to address and possibly come back.
I will certainly address them with the staff, absolutely.
A lot of good, outside of those couple of concerns, a lot of good changes in here. And so, other than Greg, anything?
No, I guess it's just sort of always been my complaint. I understand, because of the world we live in, that it's gone this way, but I think that there's been maybe sometimes an over-concentration on STEM and not enough concentration on things like civics and history and citizenship and financial literacy. So I, like I say, I understand it, but like Larry, I don't like it.
Thank you so much. All right.
I am always the mediator.
Hey, you know.
Good man. Good man. We need you. We need you.
We're on old business for which there is none, and-
Thank God.
And then our future agenda items, we do have the calendar committee update that Larry mentioned, the MAS C conference update that's been scheduled for March 16th. And are there any other future agenda items?
Well, hopefully at the next meeting, cost and revenue sharing.
Yes, cost and revenue, yep.
That's it, I'm sorry.
I was saying, hopefully at the next meeting, cost and revenue sharing update.
Other items? All right. That brings us to closing comments, and we'll start with Greg.
Nothing tonight, thanks.
All right. Larry?
I just want to, I just want to thank everybody that gave their presentations tonight. I know they worked really hard on them, and they did a good job informing us. Doesn't mean we always have to agree. And I'm sorry if I was a little grumpy, but that's one that, you know, that particular-
I'm kidding.
Okay. I do, I do appreciate that, I know when we did the credits, we worked hard in trying to make it more rigorous and whatnot, and I thank you for that. Everybody did a great job on their presentations tonight. I want to thank them, and I want to thank the superintendent for his report as well. And thank you, Amanda, for yours. Yours is always great, even though I can't, I need my glasses, I guess, to find the legend that you had. Thank you.
All right, great. And no closing comments from the chair this evening, which brings us to agenda item number 13. We do have an executive session this evening to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And in order to enter executive session, we would need a motion and a vote.
Some moved.
We have a motion to go into an executive session.
Second.
We have a second.
Yep.
And this motion is to conduct strategy preparations as described, and to adjourn from our executive session. So we will not be returning to our open meeting. We will be adjourning directly from executive session this evening. We are officially in, oh, we need a vote. In favor of executive session motion, Greg?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. It is unanimous. We are in executive session. Thank you, everyone.
Go home.
Go home.